Twenty twenty-one, and this meeting is being recorded for a podcast on local KBTB and wherever else they're set. Also, Maryland does a bylaw subcommittee meeting posted for six-thirty, so you probably should open your meeting, too.
It's actually for seven o'clock.
Seven? Okay.
Yeah, bylaw subcommittee meeting was posted for seven o'clock because it was such a late schedule for this board tonight. It seemed like an opportune time to get the wrong one up. It's got work on it.
Just tell me what you want me to do. I'm not totally clear. You want to open the subcommittee?
I saw your car, I was like, I should have taken it.
We did it after the main business.
Okay, first item is minutes of July fourteenth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of July fourteenth.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Why is it the fourteenth?
I don't know. I get all right. I think the minutes themselves are July fourteenth.
Oh, I apologize.
The agenda is the error part of July thirteenth, but the minutes are July fourteenth.
Uh, I hate to say this, but no. July, the minutes of July thirteenth because that's our meeting night with July thirteenth.
Then the agenda is correct and the minutes heading needs to be adjusted.
Okay, I can do that.
I will second that with the correction.
Anybody, any comments, corrections, additions, corrections?
I would like to commend Tamika for being able to get such excellent minutes out of that.
Oh, thank you.
No doubt.
Thank you.
She certainly didn't miss anything that I could say.
No.
And then some.
Very pleased.
Sorry to make, I didn't make it easy for you. I let everybody talk.
It's okay, it's good practice.
Tim, you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I looked, I looked online at him and I didn't have the issue, I just thought it was gonna, yeah, the only thing, no, I can add this later because I actually had a phone call from somebody over there, I didn't know if I should edit in the meeting minutes because it was discussing.
Is this something that was actually touched on in the meeting itself or is this something that happened after the meeting? If it happened after the meeting, then it doesn't need to be brought into the minutes because it was outside of the board's official responsibilities.
And then I'd account for it in these minutes anyways.
Yeah, let's just do that then, yeah, yeah.
Well, okay. Anything further on the minutes? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, we're all here, I don't think we need a welcome. Okay.
Does the commissioner get a copy of this? I know it's available to him, but should we just?
Commissioner.
Call him Commissioner Director.
Director Buckley.
Yeah, yeah. Director, Commissioner.
I'll be in touch with him when it comes time to write the conditions for that decision, so I'll reach him and I'll provide, yeah.
He can get an eyeball on it at some point, that's all that matters. Warden. You ready? Tree warden, tree warden.
Hey, Tom.
A and R's, I have two, I have none.
No A and R's.
Three, continued hearing for the post office. Sign.
Approved.
That's actually at six forty.
So you've got some time.
However, I can tell you that the applicant has requested to withdraw all of the petitions, so if anybody's here on that matter that we, we'll be withdrawing.
Any particular reason why, David?
Can we touch on that at seven forty?
Or six forty?
Six forty, rather.
Okay.
You mean, these people here have to hang around until then?
For five minutes?
That's a huge.
It's rated right now, I'll take off for twenty-five minutes.
I guess you want me to jump in and throw in what the call was for Britnell? Now, put that out of the way?
Well.
Or you want to move on?
You could get to Britnell Estates.
Okay. Because it was, it actually wasn't for Britnell Estates, it was for the calls.
Okay. Yeah. Maple Hill Estates subdivision, I know today we did get a report from Quinn.
Right. The board has two reports in its packet, one is from July fifteenth and the other report is from July twenty-seventh, so there are two reports from Maple Hill Estates.
And I would say there's nothing of.
There's nothing on.
Significant, I saw it. I don't believe. Does anybody have anything else on Maple Hill?
No.
Okay, then we can go to Bryce Lemon.
Did we get a report on that?
Uh, there are no reports for Bryce Lemon this time.
Anybody anything on Bryce Lemon?
They're doing a lot. I did have one question because I drove over there on, I call it stage three, but that's not right.
Phase three.
Phase three, I don't know why I was thinking stage. Because we haven't got stage two completed and blessed, can they start, I didn't think they could start building in stage three.
Stage three.
Yeah. Um, phase three. Because there's houses going up in phase three. I didn't think they could until we had, because we didn't allow them to start in phase two until phase one was.
Yeah, we allowed them to stop, but not occupancy permit, wasn't it?
I do not believe we placed any restrictions on that.
Okay.
But I don't think it's written in the conditions.
So, can we bring up the conditions?
What would be, what would be the reason?
I'm not trying to stop them, just.
No.
But, I mean, you have a point, I mean.
What is the, what's the rationale behind it, just to make sure that the stage, phase they go, phase two is all good, approved roads, town approved everything, which means they're gonna go through town meeting, all that stuff.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's precedent?
Well, you know, uh, the thing, the thing is, I guess what I would say is, that literally is gonna require him to stop work on the subdivision for, let's say, up to six months. Because if he has to wait for a town meeting to reach that deep phase.
Is that?
You know?
But I, he's, Tim's right, I believe, in the fact that we, I thought we had something on here that he could not do.
We had to give him approval or something like that, if I remember right.
Right.
Not saying we'd stop him, but we basically had to say, the roads are in good, your infrastructure looks good, you can move forward, that's what I thought, but maybe I'm wrong, I could be wrong.
Was there any issues with phase one?
There were.
It's enough, there were like some.
There were road, there were water drainage issues.
The first, the first time around, it definitely was.
Yeah.
Had to be put off.
What, the road acceptance?
Yeah.
Road acceptance had to be put up because the applicant wasn't ready to pursue the road acceptance, notwithstanding the interest from other boards that the road be accepted on a timely basis, but it wasn't ready. And ultimately, I think everybody acknowledged that it wasn't ready, so it came back in the fall of next year.
I mean, I just want to make sure that everything is going in sequence, that's all I'm asking. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I just don't remember because I don't have the orders of conditions.
May we ask to get the order of conditions for Bryce Lemon sent to us?
Do we have them electronically? That's a thing I don't think we do.
Well, you can copy. Electronic.
Sure, I can, I believe I've already sent those out before, but if not, I'll send them on a second time.
Nope. I'm doing my.
How far back was it?
I'll make it up to send it out.
Not all that.
Mine goes back to the twenty-fifth.
Wait, I'm sure we have nothing in our regulations that says.
Would be something you would have sent me or no? Not since I've been.
I don't recall.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Prior to coming to.
I mean, if we're talking about phase three, there's already been a release of covenant which allows for work to start on the lots. I believe the issue was with respect to occupancy of the lots until the phase has been closed out. Is that correct?
What?
Till the phase has been closed out.
It's not, it's not all over yet.
There's not a release of covenant for phase three.
Yeah.
Which allows the lots to be built upon.
Yes.
But the lots cannot be sold until, until what, the road is accepted or some caveat, no?
No, because I remember people were living down on phase two. They got roads, I mean, they were living with gravel roads and torn up stuff.
This is the same conversation that we've had from time to time on, can't work start on phase two if it's not done on phase one. I believe you've resolved the issue, and it can be, I think you had the rationale for it, it was a prior to meetings.
Well, you know, the only thing, let's put it this way, the only restriction that I can even, right now, remember was, we gave him permission to start building houses on Bear Hill two.
Correct.
But, no occupancy permits until the second E rest of Britnell.
Correct. That I remember quite well.
That was recent.
Yeah.
That I can remember. That I don't, but some isn't another, or was something I know about phase one and phase two?
I go back in my emails from either year.
I can reset it. I sent it for the first time.
If you did it before last May, then I don't, I don't have it.
I don't, that, that doesn't mean anything.
Well, if that could happen, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
I want to go back to this twenty-sixth Maple.
Okay, yeah. So, back to item three. They are, let me see. We have an agreement signed by someone in the Brooklyn Post Office to withdraw the petition from the sign.
Do they give a reason why, just?
No.
Okay.
There's no place for it, really.
There you go.
We didn't put a line, because everybody hates it.
I drove by, nothing for nothing now, but Hoviston just the other day, one side of it was like yellow and faded and disgusting, and the other side was like white, and it was the same type.
That would be the sun.
Globish, glob, right. Globe-type illuminated, internally illuminated globe sign, I was like, oh, that's what they were thinking, I'm like, well, we don't want. So, there you go.
They could fix all that if they put UV protection on the plastic, but.
Well, I, I'm, personally, I'm glad because no matter where the sign goes, I don't want it to obstruct the view of Maple Afro people pulling in and out.
A big rock, they polish it and engrave it and put a light on top.
Yeah.
The problem with that is the US government gives them standards and they have no choice, but not, they can, they can't deviate from that standard. That's the pain in the rear end.
I don't think we have to take any action.
Well, the board has to vote to acknowledge the withdrawal request, a motion and a vote is too close.
I'll sort of move on that.
Second.
It is the ready discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None. Okay.
Nothing would happen unless they, somebody filed another petition again.
Yep, that's correct.
The process all.
And we'd have to do a hearing and the whole nine yards.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll be a brand new post office next time.
Yeah, how many years have been saying that?
Quite a few.
Yep.
Anyway, back to Bryce Lemon.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Only thing I can say, I took a ride at both ends of Bryce Lemon, yeah, he's got, what, three houses almost fully framed, and at least two more foundations.
Had a lot of logged, well, when I was there, it was a ton of logs at the end, too.
They haven't moved that.
Pile?
It's been, it's been exactly that way, particularly with one pickup truck, that's, I don't know, this is a permanent fixture there, hasn't moved in weeks.
And for him, thank goodness, he got paid last night.
Oh.
For the chips.
Oh.
You know, all the loggers around have been, you know, have been shoved. A lot of money has been owed to him, and the particular person told me this morning that last night he got notified that.
The check is not in the mail anymore, it's in the bank.
From whom?
Say again?
From whom?
The power plant owners.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so he was very pleased, very happy about that, and I can imagine the gentleman that's doing Britnell right at the moment is gonna, hopefully he got paid. I have not heard.
So, they are done logging for that one.
Yeah.
So, the question is, are they gonna get paid for the logs?
Well, that's a different story, this is just strictly the chips, and that's why he, he was in the process of buying that machine, and the machine was not doing what he thought it was supposed to do, function properly, and it went back. They buy-bought a seven-hundred thousand dollar machine.
Okay, well, so Bryce Lemon, I also know it's on the phase two side, I don't see any work in preparing it for acceptance for this fall at this point.
No, no clean out of the detention pond yet?
No, no loom on the side of the road by the sidewalks.
They haven't worked on that problem either, Norm, with the flooding that I could see.
No, someone just cut down some trees in their backyard without one of those, but it's, no, they definitely have not.
Okay, I saw it too, I drove by and like, they're not missing some or they've already done it, because it doesn't look like there's any work done.
Which, this is, I think this is the appropriate time to bring this up, Dave and I were talking a little bit, even yesterday about this. You know, Blair has indicated that both Maple Hill and phase two of Bryce Lemon, he wants to bring in the town meeting this fall. And as I just noted, it doesn't look like he's doing really much of anything on any of these. So, the question that we were kind of hashing around is, what should be the planning board's posture on this?
I just missed that word.
Posture.
Posture.
Oh, thank you.
Should we regularly give Mr. Blair some guidance that he needs to get his?
Act together?
Act together. Or do we simply say, he knows the rules, he knows what has to be done, and we let the chips fall where they may, when he's not, when things are not done in time and not ready?
Is this in regards, is this in regards to the permit renewing?
Haven't got, no.
No.
I'm just curious.
No.
It's, it's, typically in the past, the chairman, Kevin, he, I shouldn't say he's, I'll go with just builders, that's probably a safer way to say this, have waited to the eleventh hour to come in with their documentation and try to get a road, us to review it and then get it onto the warrant for approval, and we end up in the past of sometimes having meetings at the town meeting to say everything's okay, and the board's sort of gotten really tired of that.
Well, once again, phase one of Bryce Lemon, that's just what he did. And by the time we got Quinn Engineering out there to do the inspection and all this kind of nice stuff, there was enough stuff wrong, no.
It didn't pass.
Right.
We weren't gonna let it pass, and the town will ask for recommendation from us.
Yeah.
We didn't let it go, go to the meeting.
Yeah.
So, at the time, people were living on the road, I'm just trying to get it all together, so people live in there, it's paved, the town's filing it?
No.
No.
He's, he's responsible.
That's what the, one of the big things, it's all of a sudden it's passed, now we've got the money, the budget adds the miles.
He has to do any repairs, so if any of the manhole sink or anything like that, he has to repair it because the town's not responsible.
Which usually happens the first year, right? If they got to.
Correct. Well, that's why something else, after, tell me if I'm wrong, Norm, a year after the town takes it, he still has some money involved for any damages that happen.
We retain ten percent of the original bond.
Yeah.
For a year.
This happens all the time, and it's just because they dragged their feet, or because they're not actually done.
A big part is they're just dragging their feet. They feel that, you know, they can handle something today and will be ready, you know, to load on it tomorrow.
And we have to send to Quinn and their ASBIL drawing, so Quinn's gotta check them, and sometimes he doesn't even have the latest drawings to check against the ASBIL, so that's a whole hullabaloo we gotta go through then.
And we don't, we haven't, usually, you know, we'll yell at them and tell them not to do it again, but there's nothing that we can stand on that says you have to stop doing this.
Shut them down.
Well, that was my next question, can we, as a board, if the town meeting is June sixth, May, what is it, oh, like, May sixth, whatever it is, second Tuesday, whatever it is, pick a date, can we give them thirty days before that date?
We usually try six months.
Whatever it is, and say if this is not in, and I'd say it's sixty days or six months if it's not in, then it's just, it's not.
We did that before, didn't we, Norm, we came up with like a date, like?
Well.
Can you give them?
We did.
Yeah, please.
Dave, I thought we did.
We came up with a policy, or say a more of a timeline.
Yeah.
Some guidance for how to proceed if you want to have the street acceptance done by date, certain, start with certain work, like, three to four months out, which is not as restrictive, it's restrict, not as much as some municipalities have in their documents, which someone looking for six to nine to twelve months out.
Yeah.
So, three to four months out, given that there's an ordinary course of getting it ready, is what we decided was the appropriate timeline.
But we don't have anything in our regulations about that either.
No, but I guess we could, you just gave me a good idea, we can always do policies, they don't have to be, they don't have to be town-approved and they don't have to go through a hearing.
I mean, that is something of a policy.
Yeah, I just thought when you said it, I'm going like, that's not a bad idea.
So, it does exist, it existed last time for phase one, that wasn't followed for phase one, getting to Quinn Engineering on a timely basis wasn't necessarily followed either, so, but it didn't end up on that town meeting because it wasn't ready. I think everybody acknowledged it was, it wasn't ready, so it was moved to the next one, and by the time we got to that one.
It's still close because they hadn't, there was two things still outstanding, did the pub station finalize?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying they were big things, but it was still.
Still things that were there.
But the issue's been raised several times on this particular address.
So, you know, we can have a policy there stating that things should be ready within a month of the town meeting or a special town meeting, or is it gonna be from that one?
It said go four months.
Whatever, and, and, you're not gonna make it, you know, it's gotta be the spring town meeting, the annual town meeting. Trying to think of his name, the name there, the ex-slechman that.
Oh, Louie.
Louie, connected to Louie.
Road acceptance policy, throw a paragraph together and throw it on our website, then everybody knows about it, not, we're not looking to single out any one builder, everybody knows that. You need, you must, if you want a road acceptance with the planning board, you got it in four months before town meeting.
The thing we came up with is to start the process four months out.
Okay.
Not that it can be finished, because realistically, could it be finished, but the process could be started.
I'm fine.
With the eye towards an approval in a, like, the fall town meeting, knowing that there are certain things that have to be done, outlining that process, and then periodically coming back to it and just seeing where it stands, that's what, that's what we came up with before.
I just wanted to get it on a piece of paper and put it on our website.
Put it on the website, okay.
And then, like we did with the illusionary, and if, and if our website grows, that's fine, then, then we can't say we're singling out one person because we're putting it out for anybody that wants to do it in town. I don't know, I just, I'm getting to the point where, I hate to say this, I'm agreeing more and more with the select board about policies and procedures, we're just gonna have to start putting them out there.
Does Quinn Engineering, when they get involved in something like this, who's the date keeper, I guess, on this, right? So, we know when the town meeting is gonna be, whenever, sometimes that's not even decided four months.
Well, this time it wasn't even decided.
It's not even four months, it's in theory, right? So, in theory, we have our town meeting date, and four months before that, June, is it June, yeah, June, right? June, May, April, March, so, at that date, does Quinn Engineering get an email from us or from you or from, who manages that? This is the question.
It's more of the.
The problem is the Quinn engineer.
Yeah, it's them getting the information.
It's the developer.
Yeah, because Quinn's just doing the review.
And, you know, Quinn, Quinn is reasonably, more than reasonably responsible.
Yeah.
You know, when we send them something, you know, we.
But we have to send them something. My, my question is, does, does a developer even, you know, is there something where the developer gets, you know, they have to figure out their calendar, can Quinn Engineering do a notification to the developer?
No.
And charge them a fee?
It wouldn't be.
Even if they charged them a fee?
Well, Quinn, it would be us.
Yeah, because we pay.
They don't have to send any, hey, just as a reminder, so do we, would we then send that email, hey, just as a reminder, town meeting is four months away, today is the day that everybody should be starting that pro, you know, starting that process.
Has the slick woods ever talked about fall town meeting at all?
No, that's what I was just gonna say.
I thought they had set a date.
No, they haven't even discussed it yet.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, they had.
Somewhere I thought I even mentioned.
Isn't that usually free cash or is that in the springtime?
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 that's the fall.
That's what I thought.
You said free for all or free cash?
Yeah, free fall.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Yeah.
I wonder if we're all together sometimes.
Yeah. No, that's the, that's the free cash certification time. And that usually, that meeting usually gets pushed depending on when free cash is getting certified, so.
Exactly, from the, from the.
State.
State. It's usually in November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Late October or November, before Thanksgiving.
You could say the anticipated date of the fall.
Exactly.
But if we said that you need to start the process in a, in a policy four months prior to any town meeting, or any scheduled town meeting, if you want to get specific, that could pretty much, we, we put them on notice that you can't show up a month before the town meeting and say, hey, I want to get my road approved, I've got all the documentation, because that doesn't give Quinn the chance, I mean, Carl turns stuff around in two and three days and can do it in a week, but we really want him to go through, like, a bigger subdivision, go through everything and make sure it's all there.
Would we, would we be, in this policy, would we probably want to break things down in a, in timeline fashion, you know?
Well, we already have a policy.
Four months before town meeting, we need ASBIL plans, you know, three months, we need, you know, whatever, final reports.
We already have a policy, we didn't break it down that specifically, we just said the process needed to start four months before the anticipated town meeting, so there's already something out there. It wasn't meant to be overly prescriptive, it was meant to kind of let the public know that the planning board is willing to work with interested parties on street acceptance and that this is the generalized procedure for that. I think when we discussed that over several meetings, there was no consensus that it'd be overly prescriptive or more detailed than.
And, and I'm sort of opinion in the rear end.
Well, if you want to come back.
As part of our policy, instead of us doing it, please, as part of your submission, please provide a timeline for your submissions to the planning board.
Just to, just to pick up the thought, so the idea was if someone comes in four months before they have the meeting, and at that meeting, then the expectations and the deliverables are established at that point with some kind of a schedule that you get, as opposed to doing it the other way around. That was the intent of it, and then how, meetings after that, as it gets closer and closer, as a meeting, not a hearing.
Yes, yes.
If you want to come back and revisit this, we can certainly do that, but there's already something out there.
I think it sounds like we want it to be more specific, or that we need it to be.
I think the question out there is, is how the board should or should not proceed with respect to street acceptances and getting the developer to be mindful of their responsibilities, that I understood to be the question on the table. If the question is, let's look at the policy again, I guess that's a different thing, but the original thing was, what do we do with the situation? I believe that was.
Considering, okay, four months, is it four months till the next town meeting?
Yeah.
No?
No.
No.
Three.
October, September, August, July, we're less than that.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So already.
Already. We violated our policy.
So at this point, so say, say, say rewind to last meeting, do we know what roads could potentially be accepted before? Are there any?
Uh, yeah, phase two of Bryce Lemon and Maple Hill.
So would it be feasible that, again, in theory, last meeting at that time, and then four months before the spring meeting, we know those two roads and an email sent to that, build like whoever that is?
Yeah.
And say, just so you know, we're at that four months, this is your one and only reminder that we need to make sure that you're starting your process with Quinn Engineering, blah, 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 we have four months until the town meeting. Um, you know, thanks for your consideration, and that's it, so they get, so it's twice a year, we're sending a friendly reminder to whomever we think, I mean, four months, we should know who's gonna be trying to get a road accepted.
That, that's kind of my initial question, uh, do we wanna notify the builder?
And I'm, I'm somewhat, no, again, this is my opinion, I'd rather put a policy out there and let them do their job and come to us, 'cause otherwise, we're tracking, we're tracking their building, and I don't really want the planning board to be.
I just didn't know if it was that easy, where you just ask the question, you're like, yeah, let's this and this.
No, okay, but I like what you said, I just, I just feel if, if we get into that, then we're tracking progress of the builders.
I don't think so, I think we're just notifying that, by the way, if you, uh, wanna put a, a road on, at least that's what I heard. That when, we're not really tracking, it's just, I mean, there's only, what, how many, four of them?
Yeah.
By the way, if you were planning to, um, bring your road to town meeting, you need to start now.
Yeah.
Which is, which is different from tracking, that's what my point is.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying, man, I'm just, I'm more, I'm playing chess down the road when Cleese got four, or somebody else has got four or five subdivisions going at the same time in town, like, uh.
Well, then we would be tracking, but if you just give them a general notification, I mean, I think that's two, two things that, that we've been talking about.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, I just wanted to get a policy out on our, our website, so.
Yeah, I, I agree that there should be a policy.
And I don't mind in this case, Norm, if we tell them, you know, in this case, Blair developers, that, you know, you've got two coming up. The process maybe should be started by this notification.
I just wondered, maybe.
By the previous meeting.
Yeah, Dave, Dave, or everybody, what's more work, doing what we're talking about right now, an email, a little this or that, or scrambling at the end? Which you know you might end up.
Yeah, no, I like what, I like what you're saying.
A little bit of, a little bit of work now, easier than learning at the end, and then we just say.
I just wanna take it one step further and at least get something up on the website, like we did with the illusionary frontage, so, it, not just these two streets, but anybody down the road that comes in for the, now until the end of time knows, you gotta start this thing at least four months early.
Let the illusionary frontage actually go to our website, I did, okay. Can you write something up?
You've already got the policy.
Already have it, it's just a matter of posting it to the website, so that can be done.
Well, we have to adopt.
It's already been adopted.
Has it? We have to adopt.
Yeah, the board took about three to four minutes to go over it, I don't know that you call it a policy, that you call it something less, slightly, slightly less than a policy, but it serves the same basic function. Yeah, we went over it on three to four meetings. So, to put it on the website, I can do that, and the question on the table regarding notification to the developer was.
I still think we, I like, I like Kevin's idea, Norm, I think we should do that in this point, give, in this case, it's Blair Realty, a little formal email, hey, it's July twenty-seventh, and three weeks ago, if you were gonna put these two on for town meeting, you probably should've started. So, this is your, this is your friendly reminder.
Never mind, probably, it is necessary, they.
I like that one, okay.
It's necessary to start.
I like that.
Do you think this makes things easier for us, in your opinion?
Maybe more orderly, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, a- and it's, it's kinda one of these things where, I, I guess, more particularly, not so much for us, but let's say for Quinn Engineering, and even for DPW.
Yeah.
Nobody likes to scramble, I mean, that's.
That's it, that's honestly it.
Is your question, you think it's effect, gonna be effective, or is this for?
Well, it's, it has to be effective, but I mean, it is, you know what I mean, if we just, it's only effective if we don't accept the road, because you lose the deadline.
I, I, I don't like to put any pressure on Quinn Engineering, they do a very good job, far as they're as proper as they can be, and, and I just think it would be unfair even as to go and say, hey, you know, because Blair didn't get this thing in in time, uh, we need you to do this within, you know, three, four, five days.
Yeah, we're asking Kevin to jump through hoops, and we don't need to be dumbing out.
I agree.
No, we don't.
He's, he's taken over such.
So it's already an adopted recommendation policy, whatever it was listed as, we put it onto the website, and.
I just think we need to get an email to Blair.
Do we email everybody? We have an email?
There's only two, there's two, uh, Maple Hill and Phase Two of Bryce Lemon. That's why I'd email, tell them that they're gonna get it on for the fall town meeting, get the process started now.
He's the only one that has an outstanding subdivision.
Yeah, and then put the policy up, and at that point, we've notified anybody, I, I feel we've notified every, any potential future builder by putting it up on the website, having it available to the public. And not saying, I, I like your idea, like, if next year we get two more roads, it didn't hurt to give them a heads up in, until town meeting, May, like in January, or so, hey, we understand that Phase Three is finished.
Right, doesn't have to be our policy that we notify them, but if it so happens, that there's a couple, and it comes up in conversation, you just.
Doesn't hurt to be proactive, not at all.
It'll be easier for us later on.
Norm, if I may, just something for you guys to keep in the back of your mind, as far as Maple Hill, there is still an outstanding, um, not issue, but the conservation restriction that we're still working with him on, it still has not been approved and signed off on by the Concom. And I did reach out to Mr. Blair to try to get that streamed out.
Did Boston, Boston hasn't approved it?
That's where it was left, was, it went through town council, the conservation commission reviewed it, and then the next step was that Blair was gonna then take it to the state, and we've not heard back since then, and that was a few months ago.
That road's not getting approved until twenty twenty-eight.
That was a while ago.
Yeah, so I don't know what the status is, so I actually just emailed him about it today, 'cause one of our commission members said, hey, whatever happened with that? So I just thought I'd mention it, 'cause since you guys were talking about the street acceptance, I don't know if that plays in.
I haven't been out there to Maple Hill lately, has the sidewalks been put in yet?
No.
Well, this is the time to do them.
No sidewalks, no final paving, uh, no landscaping beside the road.
Well, again, it doesn't hurt to give them the message, 'cause then we can say, from the planning board's perspective, we've given you a heads up.
It's the same building.
Yeah, yeah, just give them a heads up.
You just go over by them once.
Yeah, well, tell them, Maple Hill, and if you're gonna do Phase Two, uh, get started on it for the fall town meeting, otherwise, um, you know, get started on it and get it to us in January next year for, um, spring town meeting.
Send him one reminder, and then he forgets about it?
I don't know about that, I, I, I sort of, I like Kevin's idea.
And I say, this is, this is what I'm kinda trying to get at.
Right.
Do we wanna aggressively coach, I'll call it for lack of a better word, coach him into getting stuff to us on time? Or?
Part of me says no, but I.
Excuse me, you could, uh, establish a date that said, um, meetings, uh, road acceptances will not be considered after December fourth or whatever.
We could put it on our agenda for that four month, for that meeting, the fourth month before the town meeting. This is when we get all the documentation for the, uh, road acceptance, after that, sorry, party's over. I'm being facetious, but it's not a bad idea.
Is it a fair statement that the majority of builders look at our agenda?
No, well.
Some watch the meeting, anybody even on, do we have two guests, or no?
Oh, there are two guests, yeah.
Do we, yeah, I'm just, I, I'm just kinda curious how, you know, how, how vocal in the past has the planning board been directly with all the builders in town? For new builder comes in, it's, it's impossible to know who, who's always out there, and you can never get everybody in, you know, they come on their meeting, it's on our agendas, they can look back, they can go on the website, I mean, there's a lot of ways to get the information.
The website was the one thing that I was, because that's a government, quote, government entity website, so if you're looking for documents or anything, you should go to the town website, and if it's not there, then contact the department that's here.
If we have a good title on the document that's in there, that's easily searchable, and, you know.
I think.
Requirement for road acceptance, you know what I mean, you make it a very obvious document, that if anybody's trying to get a road acceptance form, they go on our website, and there it is.
I mean, this is, this is great, new policy regarding illusionary frontage, that's the title, that's really easy, new policy, road acceptance requirements. So, there it is, I think that would work.
Well, it gives you something to stand on, that's what I like.
Doesn't hurt to have it, have it, and, uh, buddy, buddy. So, so we do wanna tickle Mr. Blair a little bit?
I think the answer's yes, I don't think we need to vote, we just give him a, an email.
I think that's probably useful, because there's also other entities that, at least for the last go-around, had a very strong interest in this matter, for whatever reason, to make sure that it got to a certain town meeting, um, but it wasn't ready. And it wasn't ready, and that Quinn Engineering needed a fair amount of time to make its final reports to the planning board. So if there's a policy, and it's known that this policy's out there, and it's been distributed specifically to this developer, then I think that gives you some, the board some kind of a position, that it has been trying to be proactive on us.
Yeah, I just go back to the ninety-nine issues of Bear Hill, I never, ever wanna go through again.
No.
It took a year and a half or so to work through, yeah.
The final inspection came up with ninety-nine, ninety-five deficiencies.
And that was the as-built plan. We were like.
How do you build an as-built plan with ninety-five deficiencies?
Well, the ninety-five deficiencies was found by Quinn Engineering, they sent the as-built plan and saying it was complete. Quinn went through it, and came up with ninety-five or so or more deficiencies, and this board sort of launched a space shuttle, you're kidding me.
And the policy was created because of that situation, and I think everybody acknowledged that the process didn't go well at that time, when you come in at the end of September, you say, here's our stuff, you wanna be on town meeting for November, that, that's, that's not the way to do it.
That was bad, yeah.
Which, Bryce Lemon Phase One was not as bad.
No.
Okay. Think, anything more on Bryce Lemon? Okay, Britnell Estates, um, I think we got the second one, Quinn just came in today. We're to have a new town license, uh, this morning, early this afternoon, uh.
Am I at the right place?
Yes.
Yeah, you just haven't gotten to the agenda item, it will be part of the bylaw, so, sorry, you're gonna have to. You're gonna have to bear with us on that.
Sorry, we ignored you, that's fine.
Anyway, uh, and Tom said they have actually finished logging Britnell Estates.
Yeah.
Uh, I did not realize, you know, just came, never came to my mind, it's a phased subdivision, you know, three phases. I didn't remember that.
Yeah. The first phase was strictly to connect the roads, point A to point B.
Correct. And, uh, I believe he has, I think he said, he has to submit his stuff to, uh, Joe Buckley for the tree, so he's gonna need to cut out where the, the stuff on the other side.
Is there gonna be a, a hearing for that, Norm, that we'll have to, because we typically facilitate the tree wardens?
You know, I, I'm definitely fuzzy on that.
We did for Gary, that's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, yeah. We did for some, but we don't think we did for all of them. And I, I, I don't know, we'll have, look up, look up the scenic road bylaw.
Oh, it definitely says, it, to the planning board, but I'll look again to make sure, in fact, I can probably look, 'cause I think David sent that to me.
I think you guys said at the last meeting, if it was more than three trees, like, Joe, could you up to three trees, and then after that, it would have to be a public hearing?
This is. But I think that, I, I, I'm not, I'm not really familiar, yes.
Mr. Chair, as I recall from the scenic law, scenic roads bylaw, the tree warden has authority over the trees and needs a hearing. The planning board has authority over the stone walls, and it requires a hearing, and the planning board may facilitate to combine those two hearings into a single public hearing. So if there is only a tree warden hearing, there is no necessity for the planning board to be involved. I'm not saying the planning board can't be, especially at request of the tree warden.
I just didn't think that, I thought the reason we did the tree warden is he didn't have the ability to hold a hearing. He had to come, he had to use the planning board for the hearing, I, I, I remember, I remember the state law, I don't remember where it is, I gotta, I gotta do some research, but it, but you're right, in the, in the, um, scenic bylaws is, in case there's a threat to public safety, it does not allow sufficient time to obtain approvals from the tree, uh, planning board. But it says, public hearings, criteria for granting approvals of applications, the planning board should hold public hearings thirty days of application. The hearings may run concurrent, and it doesn't say anything about.
What, what I'm just curious about is, where, where is the separation that Peter was talking about, stone walls versus trees?
Hold on a second, that's up under control.
Yeah.
Within the public right-of-way of designated roads, a tree warden or his designee may approve the cutting or removal of up to three trees per two hundred linear feet of the right-of-way. Within the public right-of-way of designated roads, the following activity shall require approval of the planning board in accordance with provisions of this chapter, tearing down, painting, or destruction of stone walls, cutting or removal of trees, the scope of which is outside the responsibility of the tree warden as defined, repairs, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving, including construction of new driveways or roadways, or alterings of existing ones, insofar as they affect stone walls or trees within the public right-of-way as defined in subsection B one and B two. And then the C is, in case of threat of public safety, that whole thing, then we get involved as a five days of emergency. But yeah, it looks like, it's not, it's sort of somewhat defined, but I always remember, at least when I started the board, if, if anything with the tree warden, he came to us, we posted it, 'cause we didn't have the ability or, or to post it, and then we, we basically let him run it, but we were the ones that were facilitating, I guess is the best word to use.
Well, it's in his ballpark, at this point anyway. What would he decide to do?
There are no stone walls?
There are no, apparently there are no stone walls in that section.
That is what I was told today by the project manager. That there, that, the best guess is, at one time, there used to be a continuous stone wall, now there are sections and piles.
A stone wall along like fifty feet of my frontage, and then nothing, with the remaining four hundred and something five feet.
Well, we're gonna have to get a, uh, archaeologist out here to make sure they're not buried anywhere.
We have a, a stone wall at the town buried on our property.
I just recorded that, so, build a house over there.
Okay, uh, anything more on Britnell Estates?
The only thing I wanted to add is, as part of that, the houses across to it, across from there, and, uh, gentleman, uh, Andrew had called me up and wanted to talk about what was going on with Britnell Estates and the Britnell, what's it called now, or what was the name?
I forgot.
Something, happy, happy honey ground states, there's a name now for that area with the houses and the, uh.
For the seven estate lots, or ten or twenty nine estate lots.
He wanted, he wanted to ask some more questions about, uh, sewers, um, what, what our planning was, and, uh, with the conditions, I said, well, that'll all be worked out, um, coming down the road, when, when David gets them put together and we discusses them. So he just had some questions, I tried to answer them the best I can, giving him some advice about coming to meetings and hearings, and then he was asking me about Britnell Estates, I said, well, that subdivision's already been approved, it's already gone through all of its hearings, and it's in sort of the construction phase. So, and I said, there's no appeal process at this time or anything like that, so, I just gave him that information, that was pretty much the conversation, but I wanted to bring before the board, 'cause he called Tamika, or emailed Tamika, one of my number and my email address, and I really don't give those out, 'cause they're not town-paid for, pieces of property, so, I just don't, so she gave me his phone number, and I called him and left a message, so.
From a town phone?
No, from my landline in Rutland. My cellphone and the email, I typically don't like to give out too much, too many depositions in my career. So, that's just the report I wanted to get out, the gentleman who called me from the hearing that we had before.
I assume you got my next door neighbor?
Yes.
Okay, anything more on Britnell? Uh, Bear Hill Two subdivision, we have a little report on that one. We have another report on that one. I don't want to comment today. I don't see a whole lot of concern. Although I'm sure the people at number six and all read the Arrowhead way are still not happy.
We got any idea when this thing will be? Done or at least the base coat put down?
I don't think he's on that firefly.
I didn't think so either, but it seemed to me there was a I don't know, there must be a smaller construction outfit working on this, so.
No, I would not say that. Looks like we've got, what, three, three big rock trucks up there? Two or three excavators? Well, good sized excavators and some other stuff as well.
How many, let's see, we allowed him to start the houses?
But no occupants.
But no occupants, right. So how many houses has he started on this job?
Up there, no houses.
No houses? Okay.
Looks like he does have the I'm not sure if it's final gravel. I think it is final gravel, at least on the lower the pipe, when you're starting to go down the hill.
Yeah.
That pipe looks like it's almost ready for removal.
Did, did Tom slash Cle and Joe ever get, and Joe, I mean Carl ever get together to get that staking thing worked out for the road? So we know the road's actually the plan?
Never heard back.
No, that's what I'm asking about.
No, I think that was discussed.
What's that?
I think that was discussed. I remember something in the minutes.
It was supposed to happen and I just, I hadn't seen any reports, so I was like, it's just me dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
We got an email from Cle this afternoon.
Uh.
Did you? I'm assuming you got it.
Yeah, I believe you're right. Around Arrowhead, yes.
And I forget the actual all of the text, but he sent along with it a copy of the plan. And he had outlined with a big dotted line the area of construction, of the area that's being impacted. And I do believe he also stated that if this was not sufficient to contact him, and he would make arrangements to have his sub-air go out there with Quinn Engineering to shoot the lines.
So did he take the map that we approved and just marked it up? Or did he have his own map?
It's obviously just a photocopy, so to speak.
Do we have that? I just want to look at it.
I think I was errant in not getting that one up to the board, so I apologize for that.
Okay. I just, again.
Yeah.
It's an eight-year-old approval or six-year-old approval. And I just wanna, if those people call me up, I wanna be able to look them in the face and say, yes, he's following the design that, that we approved in the last round.
Correct.
I don't want to have to look them in the face and like, I don't know. Really want to say, yep. We've looked at it. He's outlined it. Quinn's looked it over. It's good. I'm sorry that you didn't have your deed worked out, but the planning board can't really and we, we don't have authority over private property. So that's, that's all I want to do. So.
We need
Need to get back to Blair and tell him?
Do it.
I think so. I just.
To be on the safe side, yes.
Yeah.
I want Quinn to say, give us the okay. Everything is, is the way it was supposed to be. Period.
So just so I understand, that would be Carl going out there with New England Environmental Design.
Probably, I don't know, it would be them or Anigan, it might be.
Might be Anigan, yeah.
This would be a day process to whatever it takes. Five points, look at this six-year-old plan.
Yeah, maybe a few hours.
And that's again, because there's been some complaints from homeowners that they don't believe their front yard is as big as they thought it was supposed to, or something, right?
Yeah, essentially something.
Yeah, and the plan isn't, the plan isn't being built like it was
Roads over here instead of there, so now their front yard.
And I tried to explain to them, if it's a couple of feet off, sometimes things like that happen, but typically the builder comes back to the planning board to, to let us know about that. They didn't seem to think that was happening. And I was like, okay, well, it doesn't hurt to ask.
And nothing did come back, so nobody's standing there and thinks so far as we know.
Yeah, no, and I just want to make, I just basically, again, dot the i's, cross the
Couple of hours. I was gonna do a couple of hours of work. I don't think it was a big deal at all. And if it was somebody, so it was there, so that was my question, if it's New England Environmental Design that did the original plan, should a different firm be the one to go with Quinn?
It should be a road company, of course.
Quinn is, obviously, a registered engineer. He
Yeah.
Can follow, overseeing.
Carl is above reproach, so I trust any report that comes in from Carl.
So whoever did the original plan could do the site survey?
That original plan was probably all done by Jim Callock.
Yeah. Jim is not around to do that anymore.
Somebody else to be doing anyway. Just, just for conversation, I'm just putting, putting it up.
I think you're right, Norm, it's that long ago. Jim stamped on that, on that original drawing.
And valid.
Yeah, and valid.
And then do we put a time, a timeframe on this as well?
I'd like to get back to the next meeting, because if
Get this done.
Yeah. If possible.
Yeah. I think that's least as reasonable as it can be.
Sure, I'll make a note of that and make that request to Carl.
Okay. Anything else on Bear Hill two? Okay, onward two. Number eight, Glenwood, one ninety-two Glenwood Road. Right away. This is the one where we are going to have to grant a new special permit because those ones expired. And they are requesting a waiver of the fee.
It's, it's expired?
Yeah.
Don't we have to start over from scratch when that happens?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is for a
The three, right?
Yeah, the first one is a special permit for one ninety-two Glenwood Road. That special permit lapsed. The board last saw it as part of the three lot common driveway. And then there's Demon Pond right of way. There's two lots side by side. So there's two special permits to allow two estate lots. All three of these have lapsed.
How long ago did they lapse today, do you know?
Twenty fourteen, twenty twelve.
Yeah, that's, there's, I'm not gonna buy any waiving fees. If it was a month or two or six months, I'd probably be more apt, but seven years? Nah. That's my opinion.
I don't know. Again, I discussed this with David a little bit. I, I I don't think it's really unreasonable to give them a discount once they require half of it.
What is the fee?
Total fee is fifteen hundred dollars, five hundred per special permit for three special permits.
I'm okay with it. Is that Albag?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we waived half of it, that would definitely still cover our expenses. And that's all I would say.
It would cover the expenses.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's the staff time that's involved, there's the legal ad that's involved. So.
How much is that? I mean, I don't see any reason to wait for seven hundred and fifty dollars to
It's fifteen total.
Right, if it was a cut in the half, Russell, for seven fifty, for seven years, eight to five.
Let's see, do we want Dave to get paid?
I think we charged some, I think
Yeah.
Like I said, if it was within a year or six months, or, you know, hey, we really need to get caught, we don't blah, blah, blah.
I don't mind the discount as long as we cover the fee. It's just a zero that I can't go with.
Well, no. The other particular reminder, and again, this is just a problem that I have in my head, is that the idea of special permits expiring in two years. And particularly, I'm gonna say with our attorney's advice, in some cases, just doesn't really make sense. An open space subdivision is by special permit. Builder has to start there to get that open space special permit. And then he has to go through all the rest of the review by state agencies and other local agencies, you know, and everything else. And if you just look at, okay, the subdivisions that are in play now, two years just
And not enough time, but a subdivision is different than a three lot or two.
It is, it is, but the law, the law doesn't stipulate anything.
Policy can, right?
No.
No.
Can't override state law.
Well, if the law, I'm not saying it can override state law, but if the law doesn't stipulate, if the law doesn't stipulate that a subdivision versus a two lot or a three estate lot, special permit, because that's not a subdivision.
The other side of
A special permit, there's different reasons for special permits.
The other part of that is we only very recently got the opinion sought and got the opinion from legal. So to be perfectly honest with you, I don't think we've really been
Enforcing it?
Yeah, we haven't been on the ball. You know, it would seem to me that a special permit like this, if it's close to expiring, I'm not saying we have to, but probably it would be a bad idea to notify the whole bit.
Yeah.
That it's about to expire. Because then they can, then they can renew it. They can renew it for another two years.
At no, at no charge.
That's right, at no charge.
They just have to fill up all the bullet.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we can extend it indefinitely, or we can say no, too.
The other thing that I'm not sure again, about town council's remarks about substantial work. She almost indicated that physically something had to be
Done to the earth.
Really started. In other words, go ahead with a shovel, turning over a couple of shovels, throws the dirt, no.
No, logging doesn't even count.
No. Yet, yet. I know if we tried this on Mr. Blair, we would probably end up in court, but he does not think that way. He does not do that.
Yeah.
So we need to take him to court more than we can.
Oh, yeah, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about it.
But I, I kind of concur with KP on that.
Yeah. And again, the estate lot thing is a little bit different from subdivision.
Yeah. I mean, I don't mind giving him a fifty percent discount. It's just, did they give, I guess I'll ask Dave or you, is there a reason why they didn't build it in the last seven years?
They probably haven't had a buyer.
Okay.
I have a, I mean, I guess maybe just a pretty simple question. Why does the builder believe his fee should be waived? Did he give anything else to say?
Because they've already paid the five hundred dollars the first time.
But when he paid the five hundred dollars, did he know that it expired in two years?
What's I think that's just something that just got forgotten.
By everybody or by him?
The onus is really on him because
Is it a standard thing is what I'm getting at?
But we, we, we know the two years because we've been discussing it lately.
How long has he been building, you know?
Yeah.
I'm trying to be helpful in all of this.
We have never taken action on a flyer or something.
I'm gonna throw in my adverb, yet.
Meaning we've never taken action, meaning we've never not renewed?
There's no precedent.
Yeah, yeah, Marilyn's right. We, we haven't keep, we haven't kept a spreadsheet or anything on my, they initially, the special permit was approved, say, let's, April first of twenty twenty, or twenty eighteen. April first of twenty twenty, it's gone unless somebody, because one, you can come in before that and get it and ask for a renewal and it's up to the board to do that, but after it, the day it expires, it's, you start over from scratch.
So we could have sixty of these?
Oh, I know, there's a bunch of them. They're called subdivisions right now.
And they're all expired?
They're all expired.
This is all gonna happen again.
A little different example, major home occupation.
Right.
Okay. We had two major, two major home occupations, Fran Steiner. And that, that kind of a made, that kind of special permit is tied to the property. Okay, not, not to the person. He's moved. So the special permit is gone, but we haven't did anything.
Yeah.
You know, same thing, uh, Jim Ledger. He had a major home occupation.
Correct. Is that the construction guy that was behind Lenny's place on, on Main Street?
Yeah, yeah, he's gone, so that special permit is gone. We never did anything.
Well, would you do that, as a special permit company?
I don't know, acknowledge it, keep track of it.
I don't know, a special permit's two years also?
Yeah.
Every two years if you have.
Those
Those are five, aren't they, the home occup?
I think most of them, we simply put in a statement of, of review. But every, I don't know, two years, three years, five years, whatever, we would review those special permits. Which, by the way
Central Mass Oil, for instance?
We never have.
Never have. Well, let me make a suggestion to the board right now and see what they think. Should we put together a database now?
Yes.
Of any, now, I'm not talking Microsoft Access, but an Excel spreadsheet and spend the next month or so making sure we get everything in there and start keeping track of them from now. Because we've been talking about, we just haven't done it.
Correct. We need to do it.
Yes, because
So we'll put an ad in the landmark if you have this home occupation?
That's, that's
I'm gonna talk about in the future.
That's later than I'll last, but not, not at the moment, but in the future, yes, you're right. I just, it was more of the special permits. We need to keep, you know, like for the subdivisions. We've got two or three subdivisions out there that they've expired, because I remember twenty twenty-one April was the end of the second round or third or fourth or fifth, whatever special permit. It's August. So no, I just think we need to do that, because otherwise we have nothing to fall back on. And to your point, Norm, if, if one of these people want to take us to court, we're sort of dead in the water, because we have no backup documentation.
Something for that.
So I just think it's a good idea now. Of course, I'm looking at someone particular for the database.
We're gonna need a higher system.
Yeah. Tamika, how do you feel about systeming? No, I just, I think we need to do it. If, if, because I remember Dave had goals. We could add to goal on there.
Oh.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm saying take one away and add. I'm not gonna add more work to it. You got enough now. But take one away and put, put this one in there.
Okay, no more working for the town administrator.
Your development days are over with because you've sold RDIC. You got a four-year, five-year pass now. No, that's, we still need
This is probably a conversation I don't want to go, go too far down. So if I want to have a soft landing, glad to hear.
Let me, let me just say, I think we should do that, and I just wanted to get the boards a painting, because I think it's something we should
Yes.
I mean, to me, it's simple. It's we'll pull all of our special permits into whatever category it is, make rows. I mean, to me, it's simple, it's, we'll, we'll pull all of our special permits into whatever category it is, make rows, dates of.
Oh, yeah, I.
You know, just dates of.
That's true, I'm just thinking, wondering about where we get this information, particularly on the home occupation.
And somebody's got to go back through the minutes, I mean, literally.
It's all in file.
That's right, because those have to be recorded.
Yeah, and we have copies of them.
Yeah, and Susan had, at, at one time, had all of those in a, in a file cabinet, didn't she?
And, and, you know, some of them, I think, are probably still segregated. I think there would be a, a section that adjusts home occupation, special permits. I think, you know, there's a section that adjusts the economy privately, special permits.
Estate lots.
And probably the state lots. I don't know that, but I would imagine they are.
And subdivisions, and how many others are there?
There's just one set of subdivisions for special permits.
No, I mean, just by a special permits.
Oh, there's.
Categories, some categories.
Noble Hill and McAllister.
Yeah.
And then there's, there's a third one, isn't there, Dick, out there?
No.
Noble Hill, McAllister.
And, and Sunny Johnson, I can't, the river there, whatever it is.
Milliken Brook?
Milliken Brook.
Yeah, thanks, so there's three of my new ones.
But no, Milliken Brook was never.
That's right, there was no definitive plan for that.
No definitive plan, so that thing is dead.
So that's special.
But we've never said it was, but we should. That's another one of these reasons why the special permit should be up in, on a spreadsheet, so we can say, hey, this thing is completely out.
I mean, a- and that was my discussion in the past. If we don't wanna rescind subdivisions, I'm okay, I guess, with that. But then, let's shut the permits down, so they gotta go back through the process, and we, we get another bite at the apple at orders of condition. For a special permit.
An update, because we have changed.
I, I'm just struggling, again, and I'm sort of getting off task, if we get a special permit, it lapses in two years, it's got a subdivision attached to it. If it hasn't been built in two to four years, I get the economic thing, I did in two thousand and eight, I'm good with that. But letting a subdivision stay on the books for ten or thirteen years, and I'm just, I'm still having a struggle with that, but anyway, I'm getting off, I'm getting off subject.
Yeah, I, I think we are getting.
I think the question was, what is the amount of a fee waiver for all?
Yeah.
Is any fee waiver, no fee waiver, a part of it?
I'll do fifty percent, that's my opinion.
If it covers, make sure it covers.
Cost, yeah.
Cost. Because I, I don't want. I don't want it to be hurting.
We got three parcels in there, is that seven fifty? Did anybody do, David, did you do any guess, guesstimate calculations that seven fifty would cover it?
It's marginal. If the board is trying to show some goodwill, we can work with that. It's close, but.
Will it be close enough in, when's the next time that's gonna be brought up? Five years, ten years, is it gonna be close between now and then?
No, I, I think part of this seven fifty, we tell the applicant, to David's point, we've done the goodwill. If this doesn't get built in two years, either come back to us, or it's gone and you're, and our goodwill's over with.
He's basically looking, I mean, I would even go, if it's marginal, if he's going, if he's looking for three, waive one, it's been almost.
Well, you can only do two years at a time, that's all they can do.
Well, I'm saying waive one of the fees, we'll make it a thousand dollars.
Oh.
So it's split, and then he's go a thousand, he pays two-thirds, we give him a third. Then we get a thousand bucks.
I'm amendable to that.
I don't know.
I like the seven fifty.
I think we can do a little better right from there. I'm figuring what the, the ads cost, what, over a hundred bucks?
Yeah, we've tried to peer down, I mean, in terms of financial responsibility, we've tried to peer down the ads to the bare minimal things that the statute requires to keep costs down on these things.
Yeah.
Because they go up and up and up, so between seventy, you can get it down to seventy bucks.
And the, the actual certificates and conditions are really already there, I, I don't picture we're gonna do much different.
But we have a secretary that's keeping notes, you know, for this also, so.
Oh, I think we're gonna write a decision that has been written more recently for these types of situations.
Yeah.
Now, the applicant has a bunch of not applicable for findings of fact, but that's not gonna be good enough. We're gonna have to either do it on their behalf to put something on the decision, or request that they provide more information, so there's several laws that go into each one of these decisions, and there's several laws that go into this process generally. From the time that you deal with an applicant from the get-go, to the time that you write a decision, to the time that you record the decision at the town clerk's office. So there's several, several hours per, I mean, per each of these.
I think in this case, I'm okay with seven fifty. Considering it's somewhat of a, like we used to say in the power industry, it's a repeat. It's seven years old, so I could be amicable, somebody could sway me to two-thirds easily, but.
That's how I look at it, wasn't just that, it wasn't right, you know, it's seven years ago.
Well, it was, well, they'll accept the motion at this point.
The way I look at it, yeah, it's just okay. You know, sell a house for a lot more money today than you just kind of seven years ago.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, I'll make a motion for to reduce the fee to a thousand dollars.
I'll suck at that.
I like what Kevin said, because I know what my house is worth now than what it was a year ago, so if you're selling property now, you will make that back easily.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, next item is a butterless notice. And I think this box is a little bit of a bummer, I don't know if we have enough.
It was a horrendous amount of people that was notified for that post office thing? And that, is it three hundred or five hundred?
Three hundred.
Just three hundred feet?
Three hundred feet of butters to a butters.
A butter.
It's not an absolute three hundred foot circle, it's a butters to a butters, and one, a butter across the street, within the three hundred foot radius. But the assessor's office does it in a three hundred foot blanket radius, so it's, it's an over notification, which is not required under the statute.
There were streets there that I didn't know existed.
Yeah, right, there was that one, yeah.
I saw Sunnyside, I'm going, that's in, that's in Holden.
No, Sunnyside's there, there was a one, yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's not our problem. Our problem was the notification for the estate lots. Glenn Copeland.
Oh, right, correct, he talked to me about that.
And he never got a notification.
Oh, boy.
Yet, yet. Since we get, you know, two sets of envelopes, one for a notice of the decision, and we still have those. There is an envelope with his name on it.
For the decision, but it wasn't on for the butters list?
So. You know, where, and, and he's also listed on the butters list. So, where this screw up appeared, who knows? But, uh, I kinda think it would be a very good idea.
We don't want to see any of it.
No. Not, not, I don't think, I don't think he's looking for that. I think it would be a very good idea.
Is the chance, no, I'm, so, can you bring that up on the screen?
Bring it up.
The, the property of, of Glenn versus Blair's, where it is.
It's right next door.
I know, but I was wondering about it on the screen here.
If you'd like, I mean, I know there's other things that we're trying to get to, if you want me to do that, I can.
All right, well, one of the things that I, I was told, and I feel because of the fact of right of ways, to try to get to some of his properties also, was involved, and, and. I, I, I'm not sure if that's how he was talking, or what he was talking about, but, um, with this being sold like this and all that, normally.
So, the, a- a- anyway, back to the subject at hand. I think it would be a very good idea, Dave and I discussed it, that we do have Dave, literally, when he gets these envelopes, to compare the envelopes to the butters list, one by one, before they're actually sent out.
Holy crap.
In most cases, it's not a big deal.
It's not that.
So you're saying, Norm, none of these, this, this Neo Copula trustee didn't get any of butters notice? But did Adam Glenn?
You know.
He's in the butter.
But the question doesn't matter about who got what?
No, not really.
It's a broad.
No, it's, it, it's a question as far as land concerns of eliminating the possibility that the planning board in any way fault.
Oh, I see what you're saying, look at the list that we were given to send out, and if it doesn't match, we were only given the list, I see what you're saying, Norm.
Somebody screwed up and didn't put the letter in.
Well, I mean, heck, it could, it could be lost in the post office.
Yeah.
It's possible, if that's the case, that's not our problem.
Yeah.
Not our problem.
And as you say, there's not usually such a long, complicated list.
Yeah.
I would, I'd agree with that.
So, he's got a piece of property that's gonna be landlocked, and normally, he would make access through the older owner.
No way to do that.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the problem.
Well, he did not know what was going on, and all of a sudden, the property's all sold and everything else, and, and he did not know it.
Yeah, that's, that's, Marilyn, that's where I'm having a tough time, is to, to Norm's point, if he was on the butters list and it's lost, then, Dick, I can't, I can't.
Yeah, but the matchup is the butters list to the envelopes, really.
Yeah.
And, and getting that is probably, you know, that may or may not be our fault, but I think it's useful to have it correct.
No, and I agree with you, Marilyn, but if he, if the butters list didn't have him listed on there, that's where my problem falls in.
But.
That, that means the assessor didn't do good, huh?
Yeah, but.
But you said that he was on the butters list.
Yes.
Oh, he was, I'm sorry, Norm, I didn't hear that.
He was on the list, but he didn't get notified.
He didn't get anything in the mail.
Okay.
So, again, did you check the, I, you know, it's, it goes all in different ways, I'm, I.
Marilyn, I'm sorry, I thought he wasn't on the list.
A lot of things could happen, I just don't want it to all.
I see that, I see that, Tim.
What I'm saying, Keith, is that I think it's, without getting into discussing this for hours, he is, it's our, it's up, you know, it's to our benefit to make, just check that list.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we're the ones.
And in this situation, he wasn't notified, and now, what Dick is saying is that he can't get access, because there's gonna be a development from a previous owner.
Yeah.
I guess my point is that a previous owner didn't call and say, hey, I'm selling this, just wanna give you a heads up, you might not have access, and he, well, he isn't the planning board's.
But, I agree with, I agree with Marilyn, if, if, since he was on the butters list, all we can do is check envelopes against the list, and then, that's all we can do.
Then we know where.
If he wasn't on the list, then there would be an issue.
Does car? Yeah, that's what I was worried about.
If he wasn't on the list, then.
If he was on the list.
We don't get envelopes at all, we leave it to the engineer to send them out, and we ask for the green cards in return. We have them to do certified.
It's not certified, man, right?
Certified, but you don't do certified, do you?
The statute doesn't require it, the statute requires.
Oh, yeah.
Do the, really, you know, the chat, to chat them.
Everything's different, like CBA, I do it.
Rutland used to do certify, because when I was dealing with my, my good buddy Lenny and the property behind me, everything I got was certified from him, the green little thing on top of the, so they used to, I'm not saying they did, but they used to.
The planning board, the statutes for the mailings, under chapter forty A, require postage prepaid, doesn't require certified, as in some of the boards and commissions might require certified, the zoning board certainly doesn't, because that's also under forty A. So, we're relying on the applicant, whose responsibility is to go get the butters list from the assessor's office, and to get the mailing label formatted, stickies, and put them on the envelopes, put the stamp, and put the return address.
Yeah.
And to get two sets of those. We can take a very quick look to make sure that it matches up, if it doesn't match up, and it's a one-off, I guess we can, you know, write the information ourselves, put a stamp on it, if it's more than one, or several, or it's gonna be, you know, too much, then I think we may wanna tell the applicant where we will not have the hearing held where they would like it to be, until they can fix it, if it's a lot.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You know, I mean, we have to have some kind of a breakpoint in how you handle it, if you wanna go down that road, because formerly, we haven't been checking the butters list against the mailing, we've, it's been a responsibility of the applicant to do that, but we can do that, so.
We should have the applicant, please send us a copy of what you did and what you sent out.
Yeah.
I'm serious, I'm just asking.
Okay.
Anyhow.
Yeah, they do, they send us the butters list.
I intend, CBA matters. Maple Ave, Village, Village, Wireless Telecommunications Facility, Balloon House.
I gotta ask Norm, is, I, I looked at this map. Is this gonna fall under our bylaw like that other tenant did in town, that we're gonna have to deal with this with the hearing and everything? How does CBA handle this?
The zoning bylaw has the special permit granting authority, has the zoning board appeals for wireless telecommunications facilities.
Well, why did we have to do?
Why did we do this power in the center of town?
With the.
Dispatch.
That'd be hate speech.
Yeah, it was before, but we had to, we had to do a hearing and everything.
Yeah, I know.
And we had to take the beatings.
Oh, yes.
I can see that. So, that's the only reason I'm asking, is because I, we've already been through this, and I'm going like, why is this going to the CBA and not us? Not that I don't care, because if they get roughed up, that's okay, but I'm just curious of why we aren't handling this, that was my only question.
On one twenty-sixth, Maple Ave, what's going on there?
Right, so there's a lot that is in an area of town where there's a split zone between TC and RS. The applicant would like to divide off the land along the zoning line, to create a lot that would be totally in the TC zone. The lot would meet the area requirement, but would not meet the frontage requirement, uh, because when the lot was originally laid out in nineteen seventy-two, it met the area requirement, but they didn't, I don't understand how the lot was created, because it didn't, there's nothing, there's nothing on file by way of a variance from frontage that would apply to that lot. So they wanna split the lot, uh, they're creating a new lot for the first time, and the avenue for this applicant to go before the zoning board to just get the relief, make the lot comply, and then they can go about their business of conveying it and doing whatever they wanna do.
Yeah, and I was, I read that, and I was like, no.
So, on Maple Ave, you're talking, their lot is down in here.
Yeah.
So what are they splitting, this little piece here?
This map is not the greatest that they've submitted.
I was trying to figure that one out, I looked at it, Dave.
Let me just go and get, switch out to the, the town's GIS maps. And that's probably gonna be the easiest thing to do, to explain this.
Please. The old GIS. No, no, you're fine, bye.
So the lot in question is this lot?
Six point oh one.
Yeah, this lot is split zoned between RS and TC. The current land holding is what you see in the dark yellow, it's two point five acres. They wanna create a conforming lot in the TC zone of ten thousand acre, uh, ten thousand square feet, from two point five acres. This portion here would be conveyed to property that they currently own. This lot would ultimately be conveyed out to a separate owner, but this lot doesn't have frontage. This is the frontage to get to this back lot.
No, no, that's not a road. Yeah, not happening.
This is a driveway for this piece here.
Is there already a house there?
There's a house right here, there's a house back here, and there's a house here, and there's a barn here. So, in order for them to convey this out, and to get the A and R, which they'll also be looking for at some point from this board, they need the zoning relief from the frontage requirement.
I'm not. Well, let me think about this, there's already a house there.
The house was built in nineteen seventy-two, and the lot was created thereabouts.
I just wanna make sure I'm totally getting this, so this is the one, so this is a house right where you are, there's a barn over here.
Yeah.
They wanna make this barn part of that lot.
Correct.
And this is now gonna be how, how many acres?
Uh, about ten thousand square feet.
So it doesn't, it doesn't.
Tiny.
Well, it would meet the requirements in a TC, it would meet the requirements in a TC zone.
But it doesn't have any frontage.
It doesn't have any frontage, right.
Any frontage, so you'd be a right of way to get there.
Well, ultimately, their, their bigger plan is to get the lot A and R. Well, ultimately, their their bigger plan is to get the lot A N R, get the variance from the zoning board, get the variance from the zoning board, A N R the lot, and then do. A two lot common driveway by site plan review using this access that goes to this lot to serve this lot and to serve that lot. Essentially, this would bring this lot into zoning compliance if they were successful.
With the zone. They gotta get by Z B A before anything can happen.
Correct.
And they want us to give an opinion, I presume.
Well, once again, the statute requires that zoning board matters be brought to the planning board's attention should the planning board have any particular comments that it wants to make. Or not make.
And Dave, what is the frontage that the, did it give a number in this for, I apologize, I don't make.
The frontage is one hundred feet required.
Three three.
And it's sixty one?
There's no frontage.
Oh, well, if they want with the common driveway, no, it's a common driveway. That's not a, that's not on a road. Okay.
The common driveway would use this existing land. See this, this, this part here?
Yeah.
This is the frontage for the back lot.
Yeah.
This is how the back lot's accessed, so the, it would be legitimate because the driveway would serve this lot and this one.
But it still wouldn't have frontage on a road. It would be just a driveway.
Right, but the zoning relief, the zoning relief to allow a variance from frontage would make the lot comply. And then the only other thing they need would be the A N R and the site plan review for a two lot common driveway.
But T C two, wasn't it business on the bottom and and residential?
On the second floor.
But one family is in a lot of right use.
Allows for it.
Allows for it.
One family is in a lot.
Resident are also allowed.
But let me ask by by just having. Did we have anything in in the bylaw that if, you know, if we give him another forty feet on that eight? See where the where the where is eight? And then he'd have, and then they would have their hundred feet. And then they could give the rest to the other. Cause is the intent to take, Dave, that number eight and anything that's not in T C two, attach it to the big R forty lot?
And you see this line right here?
Yeah.
This line is the zone line. So they wanna divide the property at the zone line and convey, this is the existing lives of this piece. What they wanna do is at the zone line, convey out this portion to here and convey this portion out to some future owner.
And since sixty percent of the frontage for a hundred feet of frontage right now is in T C two and forty feet is in the R forty.
There is no frontage.
There's no frontage.
This is a driveway right here. This is not frontage.
I know, but i- if, oh, the Z B A has to give him relief from frontage?
Correct, because it's landlocked.
And not only that, now you're looking at a piece of what land also there.
Yeah, I'm having, I was trying to.
And that would also inhibit. A building of a new house there.
Well, there's an existing house on this lot to begin with.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's a house right.
Right, Dave, prior to Concon being, you know.
Built in nineteen seventy two.
Right.
So is the. I see what they're trying to do.
And then they're gonna, and then this lot was probably gonna go, will get turned into a house.
No, it's gonna go, it's gonna be conveyed to the R forty people, so it'll be part of the larger piece of property.
Is there already a house there?
Yes.
But there's a barn here, so there's still only one dwelling on the lot.
Yeah.
So by doing this, we're not adding a house. We're not adding a new.
No, but we're.
This does not create a buildable lot.
We're 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 giving them the ability to go to the Z B A with a non-conforming lot.
I'm not sure if you're not complying. It's it's not complying.
We don't, we don't.
We're not.
Give anybody any ability.
Let me rephrase that. We would, they're asking for our opinion, so if we said yes.
I I I don't.
Maybe we have no opinion.
We've never, to the best of my knowledge. Handled it in that way. It is, if we have concerns. We would note those concerns. But not give an opinion whether they should or should not.
Correct.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, like I, you know, you could say, okay, if we made that into a huge estate lot, you know, that that they could get around that part of it, but. Not, not, um.
So then do we?
With that other house here.
Do we have a concern then that it's? That that lot will be a non-conforming, no frontage lot?
It already is.
Well, actually, if the board, if the board grants the relief, it would be a conforming lot by way of zoning relief.
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time understanding why it already isn't, or it is. It already is a non-conforming lot.
It's a non.
Yeah. That was built in nineteen seventy two.
I'm not sure it's a non-conforming lot because in nineteen seventy two, there was a requirement for frontage at the time that the lot was created. For some reason, this lot was not created. This lot was created as you see it now.
House was built.
House was built.
And the barn was built?
Yeah.
Or the barn was already there?
I don't know, but it's not.
You must know, you probably start paying.
I don't think we call it a non-conforming situation because the bylaw existed for frontage at the time, but they didn't build a lot with frontage at the time.
Let me ask.
There's no zoning relief.
Let me ask a real simple question. Where the hell is the driveway?
It's off of this main.
It's already there.
It's already there.
So the driveway for the the estate lot actually goes to that house?
It's not an estate lot. This is just a a house lot.
They're already both there.
They're both there. It's already existing.
That's where I'm, that's where I'm going. The driveway's already there. The person that lives here is already pulling in here every day on their drive, coming in here. Everybody, oh, go, is that the house right here then? So everybody's already driving. You're not changing anything, but you're reducing the size of this. You're reducing the size of that front lot and increasing the size of that back lot, but they're already non-conforming. Not legal fifty year ago lot, so. It reduces the value of that, right? Cause it's gonna be a smaller lot.
Yeah.
The barn now becomes that person's property, so maybe that's why they're, nothing matters, why they're doing it. Can we do it? Can you allow it? Do we not have a, I don't have an opinion. I don't have an opinion. That's what I just came up with.
My thoughts are, it's a Z B A matter.
Yeah.
Originally, I thought maybe they were looking to build a new house, but then I might have an opinion on it. They're existing homes, it's existing driveway.
Norm, you talked me into it. Uh, please, Z B A, make a decision and come back to the board.
As I said, they make a decision and then if something else is gonna happen, it's gonna happen.
And then the planning board. They could just try to clean it up.
Yeah.
That's exactly right, Bonnie. That's exactly what we're, we're trying to provide this applicant a path so that they can clean it up. That's exactly what what this is. And we deliberately, you know, we highlighted for them the path to do it just to clean it up. That's all it is.
So let the Z B A make a decision and then they can come to the planning board and do what they need to do with the Z B A decision.
You can undo what was done fifty years ago. You can't change it, you know?
Try to fix it.
Try to fix it. So I have no opinion.
Yeah.
We need to have a.
Okay.
Most of the have no opinion.
Send a letter. We have no concerns.
Correct. I do like this gun barrel found here for each of the property. I had to say that to the board. I'm like, gun barrel, then I see over here, gun barrel found at this end of the property.
Well, you know, I've I've heard the term many, many times. Using a gun barrel as as a as a micro. I'm just wondering if it was a common practice.
Yeah, I think it was. But my question with this one is how did that farmer destroy so many guns?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I was thinking, tell him, Julian.
Do you really wanna know?
Tell Julian, we don't want rods anymore. We want gun barrels.
All right. Under the next wireless television.
Yeah. I guess I'll just grab this one while we have this map.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just go up the street.
Cause it's just up the street.
Just pull it up. Go right across from the school.
Is this from the Z B A also?
Yeah, what this is, is a balloon test. So the applicant needs to do a balloon test prior to the hearing. So because they're looking for a legal act for the balloon testing, they will be discussing this with the zoning board, we figured we'd bring it to the planning board's attention as well. As the one we just talked about.
What is a balloon test?
A balloon test is, well, you think it's actually a balloon.
Yeah. So many feet up in the air and, you know, to see what people think about it, you know, you can.
They're replicating the height of a rose tower.
Tower.
Oh.
Uh, I believe it was A T and T. It was putting a tower.
I think it is listed.
Well, it's, yeah, it does say something.
Yeah, A T and T.
Over eighteen.
So it has twelve Phillips and.
Yeah.
Twelve Phillips.
The school is by it as Dick just mentioned right now. It's accessible not directly from Maple, but off of Maple.
Off of Phillips Phillips and, uh, here. And it did show it, uh, going around the, out into the. A little bit beyond that, where that point is right there.
So this structure would be a hundred forty feet tall.
Yeah, see, this is, we gotta change this one next town meeting too.
What's that?
This wireless communications bylaw. It's got site plan review under the Z B A. It's, I will get to that. I'm sorry, I'm off track.
So in other words, we are looking to give them an opinion or no opinion on this balloon test?
Just on the balloon.
Just on the test.
I think in this case, because there's no hearing involved at this point, this is more informational than than anything else. Cause the hearing will come after this. This is just more informational. It will be put up on the town sign, notifying the public of this, or the other website, noticing the public of this balloon test.
Is this the first notification that the town or abutters or anybody has gotten that there's a proposed?
Yes, it will be.
This will be.
It will be not.
And Anita Anita was a little shocked.
Oh, no, I'm just, you know, I was devil's advocate. Well, who's gonna wait, what's going on, you know?
She said Tamika was taking care of this, but they didn't know that it was under, you know, posted.
And who owns the land?
Z B A.
Well, well, I posed specifically to the Z B A paper, so I posted the application, but I actually haven't notified them yet about the balloon testing just because it's not happening until August. So I've already put in the application to do the electronic side, and then I was gonna send them an email to put it on the town website.
They don't have that, do they?
I just hadn't done that yet. And the applicant's gonna send out abutter notices as well.
I like who's writing their, uh, conditions and all that stuff. They don't have anybody.
So Tim, what's your opinion of the balloon test?
Love doing it.
Yeah, I've I've seen it before in our backyard when Pepper was gonna put in a wind turbine and they did a balloon test.
I'm just trying to think if they did it for the one over here.
No.
I don't think they did.
No.
I think we just, yeah.
The balloon test was actually, uh, the Z B A asked them specifically to do the balloon test because they already had a pre-application meeting.
It's also required in the zoning bylaw.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. Yeah, they had requested it.
Who owns the property?
Bigelow? Bobby and Jane. Bobby's passed.
And I'm sure there's a million other questions that go into it. I mean, is there, there's a whole other process after this. This is really kinda phase one.
Oh, yeah.
When it's a whole, we're in the very beginning. So basically, I don't have to ask a whole bunch of questions right now.
Tower, is it gonna?
You know, one, you know what I mean, like.
Dispatches tower?
Yeah, what type of tower? What, this one?
No, none of that. This is just on either or not, they can put those.
In four hours, that's a standard amount of time. It seems like a short amount of time. I initially, like, oh, a couple of days, they leave it up there, but. There's too much weight.
I hope they wouldn't stand.
It's a hundred and forty feet.
Pardon?
It's a hundred and forty feet.
Correct. Yeah.
That's up there.
Yes, it is.
But that's not our problem.
Nope, balloon test is good.
I'm still tossing around in my mind why we held a public hearing on the.
I think it was because it was a town property.
I I think, well, number one, town property. Number two, this wireless communication was intended for cell phones.
Yeah.
Correct.
And that's not the use for that tower.
No.
It was where that's radio.
Cell towers fell under us.
Yeah. Uh, no.
Radio towers or town.
Cell towers called as Z B A.
Cell towers did also?
Yeah. We gotta talk to the bylaw. I don't wanna waste.
I'm I'm trying to think the other one, you know, down by, uh, Devon Irish, like away, you know. On that neck of the woods. We were involved.
I remember, you know, when we wrote it.
Yeah.
And, uh. I I I have no idea if anything has happened in any way. Because the one thing that stuck out in in my in my mind, especially when they put up the big monstrosity there, was we had a limit on the height.
After that one was put in.
Yeah, but that they, that the the height could not be something more than like twenty feet above the tree line.
Yes.
Which basically made it impossible for them to build up. And, you know, so I, I'm just wondering what's happened to that part of the bylaw.
Just on the next, that's we don't have.
I don't know.
We don't have a hundred and twenty foot trees in the center of town.
Well, the bylaw says, Norm, it can't protect ten feet more higher than the, uh, than the tree canopy.
Yeah.
Ten feet above it, so unless the tree canopy's a hundred and thirty feet, which I doubt, we don't have any redwoods that I know of.
So therefore, according to our bylaw, they can't build it.
They can't build it.
Well, the applicant can't apply for a variance from the dimensional control of the tower, maximum height.
Uh, only with town approval.
So should the balloon test be ten ten feet above the tree line?
Who's seeing?
I I'm.
You're not being a cynic.
I'm being, you know, I mean, if we're being asked for this and we come through that. I'm new here, so, you know.
Okay. There's nothing for us to comment on. Note by anybody.
Yeah, they pay for it.
We're done with it.
Tribal property, it's.
Onward, onward. All of them objectives.
So Peter Crane must take this into consideration of grabbing this one here and fixing it.
No, this is zoning one. This would come under Marilyn. This is not under the ad hoc, under bylaw. The zoning is is Marilyn's group.
Yeah.
They, yeah. This would not come under.
I thought Peter took over everything.
Nobody told me anything, so.
All right, let's see what we gotta do, cause we gotta add that Excel spreadsheet thing in there and take one, go out.
These are already been submitted, so I. Although if you wanna add, you know, another, I can tell you that this is a representative of the.
I'm just, I'm turning this crank.
What are we talking about now?
Probably P M. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave.
The goals and objectives that are about that for you.
Where's the golden object?
The golden objective, no, no.
Where's the cold objective?
There you go. All right, I'm good with the first two.
Yeah, you know, they're they're all.
Yeah.
Good and reasonable.
Yeah.
And and now, and these two are being done in coordination with the planning board as we know, the Mass Plan Steering Committee and the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah. One, two, for town study. That that second one, David, the town study, you looking, they're looking to get money for that? Is the C M R P C trying to get funding for that second phase?
Uh, the implementation phase, we probably do internally.
Okay.
Working with, uh, the relevant boards and commissions to help get these recommendations completed.
Okay. What's that, that last column, your approximate percentage of time use?
This is it right here, the.
Oh, the second plea. Restore, oh, you didn't have what it, how much time you're gonna, okay. All right. I was gonna say, cause that second phase of R D I C, when I saw zero, I'm like, uh, that's amount of time you're gonna need, I would say, eh, it's gonna need a lot more than that. Cause that's gonna be a struggle. Getting that finished. Okay.
Zone B?
No, 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 with, uh, with Harbor Classic Homes, mate.
That's zone A.
Cause he's, he's gonna have to help the H P D D with you, Dick, to make sure that everything's in line, cause. They, you know, doesn't, planning board's not involved in that anymore.
Uh, planning board is involved right at the moment. Looks like they come in with a.
Do we have to approve or?
I think this is largely informational. It's an update to the board because this was requested of the town administrator's office to come up with some number of goals and objectives. This is not the complete and total list. Uh, this is six major projects. There's another twenty you could add to this if you wanted to. Including the ones that that Tim's been adding to my table since we started.
Oh, no.
Earlier, so.
I think that's, that's, that's good enough. I think that's, that's, that's good enough.
So this was just updated more, especially 'cause the planning board's been directly involved in the policy side of several of these.
And, and, Norm, I wanted to bring up, 'cause I watched the last select board meeting, not this one, unfortunately, it was on the plane coming home, but the, the one previous to that. And, and they were talking about having the department heads come before them, not the TA, but the department heads, come before them and give, I don't know if it was monthly reports or reports on what they're doing. And I, I'm struggling with that because half or seventy percent of Dave's job is working with the planning board, so me personally wouldn't want him going to the select board without yourself or somebody from the board there in case questions come up on his, what he's doing on the planning board, 'cause I, I just. That's just my opinion, I think it's a good idea.
I agree. It's not their business.
Yeah, and me personally, what I was thinking, what I used to do, what I've done, when I've had large, in, in Dave's position, is I've written like a monthly report and sent it in and let him read it. Instead of wasting, I shouldn't say wasting, instead of using his time to come in at night for a select board meeting. And then if they, and then if someone has questions, they can come back and ask the questions, so, from the report. Those are my opinions.
And you look, look at the other, flip side of that, is to, should the planning, the select board be spending their time interviewing every board member?
I agree, I agree with them that, but I think what they're doing, and again, I'm only guessing, 'cause I'm not in their mind, is that with all these reductions and cost issues, they wanna make sure the different departments are still able to function.
Really?
I'm just guessing again, I, I, I'm not, I'm not putting words in Linden or the board's mouth, I'm just guessing. But what I didn't wanna do is, is, how do I put this? I don't wanna turn into an inquisition, and if it is gonna, if that is gonna be some of the things of why isn't this getting done, blah, 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 I'd rather have a planning board member there supporting Dave, that's my, that was my opinion.
So is this something that's up for discussion?
I'm just throwing it out there.
It's, it's not a done deal yet.
The request has been made of the town administrator's office through the select board to request that the various department head members attend a select board meeting once a month, or thereabouts, and that's the request. So I'll be planning accordingly, probably late August at this point.
Peter? Excuse me, uh, I was at last night's select board meeting and they had three department heads in. It's just a catch up to try and improve communication in the town. Select board is feeling isolated from the different departments because, and the different boards, because there are no longer any liaisons between the select board and the different boards. So they're feeling isolated and, and not particularly informed about individual departments. They get a good idea of what's going on from the TA's perspective, but they're looking for a little deeper view into how things are going, what's happening in the town and how things are going. It's not, it did not appear to be inquisitional. It, it was not confrontational at all, at least that was my interpretation of last night's meeting. And I imagine that's how they would all be.
When were the liaisons removed?
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
And why were they removed? Because I tell you one thing, we like to have our liaison coming into the ad commission, that was a big thing.
Same thing with the assessors, they had them over there and they.
Yes.
So basically a flip flop, so now, so now each board is gonna be the one to do, you know, I don't highly of that, and someone said it's like a member.
Yeah. No, it's, it's, no, it's not, it also, I mean, the map doesn't work out for once a month anyway. Let's, let's just let the select board come to our meeting and find out what's going on, period.
No, it wasn't once a month, that was a quarter, I think, liaison.
But I don't think it was so much geared towards boards and commissions as it was the departments, like Peter said, like, recreation came and Sarah just talked about what's going on with Safe Place right now, and the pool and, and things like that, that the select board wouldn't have otherwise known was happening. But yeah, I agree with Peter, it, it wasn't anything like inquisitional or just an update.
I just, I've been in corporate America too long, that's my problem.
But it's, you're taking the, the, the one person out to go speak to him, instead of the select board coming in and listening to everybody.
That's, yes, but take the opposite side is that then one person knows what's happening in one board and that information never gets spread out. So there is not a significant gain in information.
So that person gets back and then it's up to the selectmen to sit down and have it.
There are many ways to metaphorically skin a cat.
So this.
And this round of select board has chosen this approach.
My question is, is this carved in stone yet, or what is the?
It has started. I, I mean, carved in stone is, is too. I'm sure that it will be, the number of people who are invited will be based upon how long they expect any meeting to be, and how long they want anybody to talk, it was, what? It was.
It'd be like the first half hour of the meeting?
Yeah, about the first half hour spread across three departments.
Um, we have a person who has your hand up in the audience, maybe Mr. Tim, you'd like to assist this person to unmute and.
Who is, I don't know.
Our.
You can't see if you're, 'cause you're not getting the screen.
Okay.
Do we have someone from the public wishing to speak?
Hi, hi guys, it's Leah, can you hear me? Can you hear me, it's Leah?
One of the select board members. Leah?
Oh, Leah.
Leah, can you hear me? I can hear you.
Uh, no, not very well, hold on.
Okay. I'm voting that, since she's at every meeting, she's our new liaison.
It was kinda making that like weird noise like last night.
Sneak right over here.
Need a tap on this?
That does not look like it's turned on. That's not. Leah, try again, please.
Can you hear me?
There we go. There it's a board.
Hi guys.
All right.
Um, sorry, I can, I think there's two issues, one is the department head updates, um, and that's with department heads and staff. I think, and I can't speak on behalf of any individual board member, I think the hope was just to get, no, I don't even think monthly, I think kind of quarterly or, or bi-yearly, um, updates from department heads, what's, you know, what's going on, are there major issues, is there anything that we need to be made aware of that, um, isn't, in the past, we used to have department head updates, um, then with, even, I think when Margaret was here, we had department head updates, and then with COVID and everything, those kind of went away, and just kind of hoping to get back with those. Um, as far as the liaisons, um, I'm kind of a proponent of the liaisons, but my concern, which I've brought up to the board in the past is, I don't, what do we do? Like, we go to the meetings and can understand what's going on, but there needs to be carved out time to provide updates, or, you know, I, at one point, I was with, um, AdCom and trying to get some stuff, going with AdCom, and it was tough sometimes to get that communication through the board, so if, on, on the select board side, if we're going to do it, it needs to be with, um, an understanding as to kind of what our goals and objectives of having liaisons are, in my mind. I don't know, um, and the rest of the board, I think, kind of felt like it wasn't very beneficial. So I try to hop on as many meetings as I can, it's nice that I can still zoom in, and just that way, I kind of know what's going on, um, but I'm doing it kind of unofficially as a citizen and a select board member who wants to know what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, we appreciate that, yeah, it does. There's definitely a lack of communication, I think, and I think it's an effort to make it better, you know, so.
As long as it's for informational, I'm okay, I just, I just didn't wanna have Dave getting put on the spot. That's the only thing I was worried about.
And I totally understand the planning board's perspective or Tim York's perspective, um, and I think in some ways, um, trying to think, there's a couple other boards and commissions that have, uh, a department head that they work very, very closely with, but some of the department heads are just kind of on their own. Um, so last night, we had, um, Chief Knight and, uh, Scott Gilroy was in support of health, delivering the vaccine, so like update, and then we had Sarah and Corino was on too. Um, so those don't really have, um, staff that then has a, like a board and commission that they work very closely with, or fun, or whatever, you know, so.
I mean, Dave, are you okay with what they're asking for, like, once every six months or stuff like that? You feel comfortable just putting a report together and sitting in front of the board?
I'm not sure, I mean, it'd be probably an oral presentation.
Yeah.
Unless it's some specific paperwork that's needed, like, for example, if the town center plan is complete, then that would be the documentation, and that would be the update. I think we'd have to probably pare it down to say, there's many things going on, we're gonna choose some high level items and go over a couple and provide an update on.
You know, RDICs in the middle of finalizing definitive plan, stuff like that, just base. Okay, I'm good with that. That's all, Leah, I was worried about, is just make sure.
I don't want him to spend more time.
Yeah, we've got so much work done now.
Totally fair enough, and, um, I mean, I don't know what the, I can't speak as far as what the expectation of the chair or the, um, town administrator are, but even with the ability to zoom in, we tried to take department heads at, towards the beginning of the meeting, and then they could get out, so that we weren't keeping department heads there all night long.
All right, Leah, thanks, that makes me feel a lot better, 'cause I, there wasn't really a definition of what was going on, and I'm from, I'm the corporate America side, where if you go in front of a committee, it's usually not good.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I totally understand and I appreciate your concerns, I think they're very valid concerns, and, you know, it's something that maybe bring up, you know, have, I would maybe talk to the, the select board chair, and we didn't just mention, you know, that I don't necessarily think that that's his intent, I think it's more just like I said, a general update, um, as to like what's going on with the department and what's working, what isn't working, is there anything we should be looking at on the horizon or whatever, um, but, yeah, I, I hear your concern and I am, I will take that to heart, for sure.
I was just being protect, protective of our planner, 'cause we're not losing him.
I'm glad to hear that.
All right.
Okay. Are we done with goals and objectives?
The only thing, Norm, I was gonna ask, when it comes, and, and Dave maybe can't, is it, are you, or is there an intent with these goals and objective at the end of next June, or maybe it's fiscal, I don't know, that you have a review with the town administrator to go over, or what, how your goals and, is that part of your performance review, I guess is what I'm getting at?
I.
Don't know?
Don't know if that's the case or not, I.
All right.
And I, I mean, like I said before, um, most of these have originated with the planning board's guidance on the policy side, or they were things that were necessary to get done, such as the RDIC.
What I was getting at, Norm, is if it's gonna be part of like a performance review, I think yourself or the board should be part of that review with the town administrator.
Yes, I agree.
Since.
Well.
Or at least have input, maybe that's a better thing.
I, I don't think the town administrator can really review hit Dave's planning board work.
No, he can't. It's the other stuff that Dave does.
It would be the, it would be the other stuff, it would be the RDIC stuff, uh, man, I don't know about what's on here. I think that's the only thing that.
Right.
That would not fall under planning board.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that, um, kind of fair review and all the extra work he does and all the spreadsheets he's gonna be doing.
Projects twenty-five through thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Okay. Bonnie?
What?
Time. Item twelve. Accessory apartment bylaw.
This is pretty interesting.
Could you pass this down to Bonnie, this is supplemental information.
Norm, if I may, the bylaw subcommittee will have to first open.
Oh, yeah.
What did she, I'm sorry.
You have to open the bylaw subcommittee meeting before we start.
So, uh, what do I do, I, I can just declare the meeting open, I don't need to get a motion.
No, it's fine.
I declare the meeting open, my mother had, remember the, my, uh.
Your gavel?
My gavel, I'm gonna have to get that.
There's one up here, Marilyn, if you're still blind.
So.
So, now I just kind of found out tonight that we're having this meeting tonight, which is not really a problem particularly, but I'm not sure exactly what the goal is, I know that we we need to write an accessory, I just had that page. We need to really take a look at the accessory apartment bylaws of other, you know, usually we generally do that, but write a bylaw by looking at everybody else's bylaw and choosing what we think is the best part of it.
Could I just give a quick overview?
Sure.
Why this before we folks. So the town does not have an accessory dwelling in the bylaw. If someone wants to have a second dwelling, they have to apply for a, they have to make, apply, um, comply with the two family part of the bylaw, which requires one and a half times underlying area for somebody, but the two families not really adequate in most of these cases, most of the cases, what people simply want is just a dwelling that's smaller than the main structure, so that family members can live there, or children can live there, or what have you. So there's no accessory dwelling in the bylaw, this is a very common bylaw in the Commonwealth, many municipalities have it. Like I said, the line of service is to allow for living options for those who wanna retire, downsize, have their kids nearby, have, uh, people that have a place to stay and visit. So we know that there's a use for it internally, because we get a lot of questions for it, can we do and what they call an in-law, can we do an accessory apartment, get calls like that often. We have to tell people, you have to go with the very restrictive requirements of the two family, which doesn't really do what we're trying to help do. And we also have a population that's aging at the, from fifty-five and older at the highest rates. So we know there's a need for alternative housing scenarios, we know that things like the senior housing down the road is one way to do it, but not the only way to do it. And thirdly, we have information preliminarily from the master plan on housing types suggesting that an accessory dwelling bylaw is necessary and needed. So working from those principles, we are working with the regional planning commission. What we've submitted for the board's consideration is a model bylaw, something that the board doesn't have to write from scratch, because it's such a well-understood type of bylaw. There's several good models that are out there. So what you'll see in your packet is the model bylaw, and you'll see an email that has several policy decisions to, to be made. So we think that the policy decisions are more the critical item than, than writing the bylaw from scratch. So what do I mean by a policy decision? Well, a lot of these bylaws have a requirement for the size of them, from seven, eight, nine to a thousand square feet, so that's a choice. How big, how big would you like them to be?
So what is, um, the goal, how do you see, what do you see us deciding this night, tonight at this meeting?
Well, like, like, number one, to me, is excellent, I like the way it's verbiage and everything else.
But, um, so.
I don't.
So you, in other words, you wanna, you, excuse me, the purpose is to come up with, uh, an outline of what we see this, how we see this, uh.
Turning this model bylaw into our bylaw.
Into our bylaw, that's what I'm trying to say.
And while we do, and while we do that, to consider the, the policy questions, which are really the, the most important part of it.
Are those the comments on the side?
No, these are questions.
Oh, those are the ones digging down.
And also, I, I think so, I, I apologize, I, I had anticipated this meeting not going as long as it has, that there would be more time to really dig into this, um, to maybe set up a scope of work, try to identify a way to get to November town meeting of this year, and then figure out what our next steps ought to be to move this thing along throughout the summertime, so that we can have a hearing and get this out to the public earlier than October. We'd like to move this as quickly as we could. Um, so I was hoping tonight would be a good way to start.
Okay, um, bylaw. I have to tell Bonnie that I had some medical issues, which I'll tell you about later, but I don't think it's, I don't get my words as clearly as I'm used to. But anyway, um, so what we can do is, as Dave suggested, to start with this number one, does everybody have, um?
I don't have the questions. I have the purpose.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that.
There's an email that came out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I've got this.
I know, I know, I saw it.
What's that, the maximum number of bedrooms?
Yeah, that's one of the emails, yeah.
Is that the one you're referring to, or you're referring to the bylaw itself right here, so?
So I have a couple questions, and did read over it quickly. Is there someplace in here that addresses what happens to when they sell the main house? It's in there.
Yeah, there's provisions to the effect of like, in general, general, um, way to describe is a registration requirement. Some municipalities require that they be registered with the registered deeds, or some kind of a, a deed restriction. So that, that's in here.
Okay.
That that's in here, it's further down.
So that's a question.
I would like, I would like to add, you know, either that or if the ownership has changed, you tear down. Way to go.
I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, yeah, first of
What I, what I would like to do is just very quickly say, you know, I'm, I'd like to know what the board feels as to what the objectives, how do you see like you, you both are concerned about what happens to it if there's someone sells the property, or the person who's, you know, say you have your mother in this little apartment and she dies, then what happens to it? Is there any other concern that people have about this whole idea?
I just wanted, me, I've read over this and I'm sort of with Norm, I just wanted to step through and comment the different sections. But from, but but this, this one that Dave sent out, they were just that's pretty big, all those questions, so those policy ones, without get I I agree with all those, I like those, but I don't think, if we don't get the the bylaw in in a general shape, going back and trying to answer those before we get the bylaw in shape, I think we'll just be doing circles on the, on it. Does that make sense, or my? If we don't get the basic of the bylaw understood among the the committee, going back and trying to add in all those details is gonna be cumbersome, to say the least, I don't know.
And I, this is the first time I've seen this, and I've been having trouble opening emails lately, so, uh I apologize for not being as up to date as I should.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, I like the idea, I think.
And to me, you're number one, you're not the purpose, but provide, you know, and once your family member or whatever passes and moves on, obtain rental income.
That's farther down.
That's right.
Right.
Oh, there it is, I saw, I missed that.
And and to me, for crying out loud, that should be, in most generally, probably number one of the things, because
Somebody's gotta pay the taxes.
So we've really identified, uh, what happens, basically that comes under what happens to it afterwards. Um, any other concerns that people have, in general?
See, e- even, you know, right in that first one, I do have some concerns.
Yeah, what is
Where, on the purpose, okay, i- i- it is says, a means of obtaining rental income. And, and again, I I I get hung up on certain things. That I think that the accessory dwelling unit is more for a family thing.
It seems like that might be going beyond the scope of what
Yeah.
what I agree that what
And, and, you know, and I I can see someone coming to us and saying, hey, I wanna put an accessory apartment, uh, accessory apartment, cause I wanna rent it out, no family. I just wanna put it on.
I just need money.
Yeah, and and I'm not sure if that's
So that
You know.
That really is what I'm thinking about under the
But but if you do it for the family.
Yeah, the other thing is, it says provide older homeowners. What's older?
Yeah, that
Well, it could be anybody that needs assistance.
My son comes out here, buys a house, you know, he's thirty-two years old, he wants to put an accessory apartment so I can live there. He's not an older
Well, that looks like, yeah, that's
I I would probably, Norm, with the cancer culture of today, I'd probably just put homeowners. Cause everything's canceled, so you can't say that.
So number, just looking at this first one, provide older home owners with the means of obtaining rental income, compassion, companionship, security and services, and thereby enabling them to stay more comfortably in their homes, so actually the other, another, a way of looking at that, and I know of of a couple that did this, they needed a caregiver.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what they did was put the accessory apartment on to their house, and then they had someone who was there all the time, twenty-four hours, but not necessarily in the house.
Well, you know, all the rest of that, that was good to me, because those two things just
So you're talking about
Older you gotta get, we gotta get rid of, I've
Yeah.
Older and obtaining rental income. I don't think that should be a purpose.
Right, no, I
No. But are, is that gonna happen in some cases, actually? Uh, well, the scenario that uh, I I I just gave, my son buying a house, and if I end up going to live with him, I I would probably pay rent. So it probably would happen in most cases anyway. But
But you, but that wouldn't be the primary
That's right, that's, that's not, to me, that's not the purpose.
Dave, what was the thought behind that, the rent?
Um, he, what we have is a model bylaw, it's kind of a composite of some leading bylaws that are models, generally.
I didn't know if you knew.
No, I think that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think, I think that what he did was what I used to do, which I very much appreciate that you did it, but, um what what I used to do is just bring in the bylaws, and then we would kind of pick and choose how you want, which is essentially what you, what you did already. So not miss, I, you know, he's not really responsible for what they said.
Yeah, cause, Norm, I'm okay with like number one, getting rid of the rental income, and then just deleting number two. Cause number two basically is all about income.
What, can you see?
But the rest of that purpose that I read through, I liked, it's just, that whole income thing, I sort of the, it it, we're, this community is really set enough to help the older population. And if income is an, an accessory of that, that's fine, but I don't think it should be a main purpose.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, and number two, I wrote in here, wrong, rewrite.
How about delete?
Delete, yeah, I put a question mark.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm, Marilyn, I would just ask, would you like me to start editing this document, you just wanna have an initial discussion of it, and do editing?
Yeah, that would be, I would, I would appreciate you edit, you know, editing on our keep records, you know, so
As we go.
So I and maybe I'm a little bit out of the loop on this one too, is this the intent, how just to start from square one, we're running a new bylaw, we're starting a new bylaw process, Dave's done all this
Mm-hmm.
work, now tonight, we're gonna go through these, one at a time.
Try to clean it up.
Try to clean it up.
Practice it.
Yeah.
I think it
And then it goes to
Probably won't get through the whole thing.
No. Typically Kevin, we've taken some cases months, other cases weeks, just depends.
I started talking about it last week, so I just wasn't sure if, I wasn't even sure if this was a homeowner here that was here for
Oh, that's
No, I was like, I'm trying to still figure out, I thought maybe you were trying
What am I doing here?
I thought you were trying to put an in-law apartment on your house, and we were trying to
He was probably trying to figure out what you're doing there too.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm, I'm, this is, I'm still just trying to wrap this all together here, so
Bonnie was a member of the, uh, committee, the committee was Bonnie with, so are any other?
We had a, I mean, Clea was even on that at one time.
True.
Yeah.
Yep.
And other various people, and included this, the planning board, as, uh, members of that.
Yeah, the sub, the sub committee for the sub bylaw.
I was the chairman. So, uh
Then as you go through, yeah, you go through, and you go over one.
But what we, we would do, literally, we would have a stack of bylaws that I got off the internet, you know, these, each one of these would be a different bylaw, and we would look at, oh yeah, I really liked them with Brookfield's, when, when they talked about it.
It was the way I used to do specifications, cut and paste.
Right, definitely.
Cause I got to go.
So
My animals are out, I knew that might happen, so
This, this is, um
The wind got it. Thought it was gonna happen, he goes, are you homeless? I said, no, that's why I have to go. Uh, so nothing's gonna happen tonight.
Nothing's gonna happen, like, if you wanted to, you know, look
No, and there weren't, I had even seen some stuff in here, and I don't wanna go bouncing all over the place, but there were just a couple of little things, like three, off-street parking is that, oh, you know what I mean, for fair, I mean, I think that there are, and I see how this can get kind of detailed, can't write a fair statement, or else, you've got, you've got twenty questions, I imagine, too, you got da-da-da-da-da. So that was on the email that I'll make sure, well, I mean, no, Dave sent that email, yes.
He made stuff like that written?
Right, exactly, and when I have the time, I wanna be able to go through it, and I just have some stuff, but
Alright, so, uh
I just don't have the time to
As the official chairman of this, at the moment, you're excused, and Bonnie, this is, um, that one blanking my name's Bonnie.
Kevin, John.
Bonnie, uh what's your last name, I can't think of it.
Bessie.
Bessie.
Bonnie Bessie. And uh, okay, so we've kind of got the idea here that the, the scope of what we wanna do is
And I'll just reply to that email.
Yeah, if you have any particular comments, I'll
I did, I had a couple, I'll reply to those, and then we'll follow up, this is beyond, uh, every couple of weeks, we'll be going through this at this point.
I mean, I think I I would say this is a priority, we'd like to get this on the town meeting for November, if at all possible.
Bylaw in Fall Town Meeting.
Well, and that has to be addressed, that has to be addressed for once and for all.
Cause I agree, it should be.
That just is not, you can't just stop business for land use.
I'm just being
So there is a purpose, that would be my next question.
The purpose is to write a bylaw which will be accepted by the town at the town meeting.
And Fa- and hopefully Fall Town Meeting, we can pull it off, yeah.
Right.
Um.
And then
Was it because of a specific? Again, a tax payer or some
Because of three things that I mentioned earlier. Number one, we have an aging population, the demographics are clear with the population over fifty-five, that are looking for alternative housing solutions. For example, what's down the street for the, uh, senior housing is one way to do it, other ways to do it are accessory apartments. Anecdotally, we have had several people in the community call, asking how they can do this, and we're disappointed to tell them that the only way to do it is to make it into a two-family, that's not a good solution. Because two-family has requirements that are more unnecessary when it comes to this type of situation. This is a well-understood type of bylaw, and also the master plan has given us preliminary survey results that this type of housing is needed.
That they weren't this
So those things all together, I think give us justification to to put this forth, and this is not a controversial type of bylaws, it's well-understood.
No, this seems pretty
And many communities have these, and we're trying to solve a housing, a housing issue for those people who wanna stay in the community without having to be forced to move someplace else.
So is it fair to say that an in-law apartment is now a accessory dwelling?
The proper
Right?
The proper way to refer to it is an acc- accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling in-laws, because it's not just family, it's now
Correct.
A way to make money, it's not, okay.
And the purpose of the bylaw committee is to look at issues in the town and address them with the bylaw.
For all zoning, all zoning bylaw goes through Maryland, all, all other bylaws, which I call administrative bylaws, go through Peters. Uh, right now, he's the chairman of the bylaw ad hoc
Ad hoc.
Committee, but anything with zoning comes through the planning board, through Maryland's, um, bylaw subcommittee.
Gotcha.
We've done, yeah, I mean, we did the Maryland stuff, for example.
Right.
And generally, we meet at a separate time. We don't, we don't combine it with this meeting.
Right, okay.
Cause they can each go a couple hours, as you've seen already.
Well, I'll let you guys finish up, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to bounce out early, but
That's alright. We are all animal lovers.
Wow, you know, nobody's there too, like, like, the kids are not home right now, so of course, it had to happen, now, what are the ways they could take it careful?
The, um
And Dave, are you in the office tomorrow?
I will be.
Is there any specific time I could stop in? At the half hour?
Say like ten?
Ten o'clock, it'll be okay.
You'll bring your other materials?
Yep. That's the plan.
Good.
Ten o'clock, tomorrow, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Sorry, I can't handle tables.
No, not
I'll get in touch with you about the, uh
Yeah, eighteen.
September eighteenth.
September eighteenth, you got it.
Thanks.
Okay, so
Alright.
We have come to one decision here.
We, uh, don't want somebody to be able to just put in a part, a small apartment to generate income.
So where, you want me to edit this document, whereabouts?
You're gonna take
So you can take actually
Older?
Obtaining, obtaining rental income.
Obtaining rental income, provide home, older homemakers with a means of obtaining rental income, so
So, we're gonna take out older.
Yeah, I'd provide, provide homeowners
Okay.
With a means of companionship, security, service, thereby, that's my
Provide homeowners with
A means of obtaining the rental income, I could say obtaining, uh companionship, security.
So just strike from here
Yeah.
Back to
It's, um
Can you get rid of the comma?
Yep.
Obtaining, that was not the right word, it's here, but
Means of having. Maybe that's a little basic.
So which doesn't
Security.
Enjoy.
Provide homeowners with a means of obtaining companionship. Because you really, I mean, I'm thinking like Norm, that, uh one of my stepsons has generously offered to us, put like a thousand dollars into, a hundred thousand into renting, maybe this basement, so we can live in it. But that's a different look, different look, look to
No, obtaining works here, Norm, because it's part of the, it it's, it's part of what you're doing for this bylaw, so I'm sort of okay with obtaining. Cause companionship, security, services, and the services is
But it's, yeah, it sounds like the homeowners
The body's enabled.
Them to stay more comfortably in homes and neighborhoods where they're mineralized, I like that. No reverse mortgages.
And otherwise, people are still
Tell Tom Sells to keep his sales bitch.
But like, my point is, and and Norm, I think it's yours, that this is of letting someone stay in their own home, whereas you were talking about moving on, you know, having, moving to your son's home, which is, there's like two different functions there, two different
Well, this one would cover you, Norm, because
Homeowner.
Yeah, just taking out the word old.
Yeah, cause i- if your son's the homeowner, he's providing services and companionship for yourself and anybody that's moving in, so it covers that, I think.
Yeah.
Alright.
It works.
Number two, I just say, slice the whole thing.
So we're done with one?
Right.
Yep.
No.
And I'll just strike two in its entirety?
Yep.
So, that maybe the purpose of that was so that if you needed somebody to live with you, and you were staying in the big house,
Right.
and you had some assistance people
Yeah, that's what I was saying before.
Living in the smaller section.
Yeah, I don't, with somebody who was actually, um, providing the homeowner with the service. Pro- yeah. What I'm saying is you're not, you might be getting, really kind of getting the service from your you're, you're living in the accessory apartment, and your son is living in, your family members are living in the, the big house.
And Marilyn, the services could be, if, to to Norm's point, if if somebody wants to pay rental income, that's part of the services, you don't have to call it out
Right.
in the bylaw.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's something that I think's a little
Well, it's, you know, it's gonna happen.
Yes, no doubt. But I don't think the bylaw needs to say, hey, rental income. Because you can buy, I mean, like in Worcester, triple deckers or whatever, turn them into rental income, or like when Tommy was there, he's got a bunch of houses. Two deck, or two houses that they can use, yeah, so
Jim, in this case here, the owner of the dwelling has residing one or the other of the units. That's a
Either.
Yeah, either one, that's a plain condition of this, so you can't have a resident, you can't have the owner not reside in it and call it an accessory dwelling.
But he can, but he can reside in either one.
Yeah, one or the other of the unit.
Okay.
That's, that
And the resident residing in the other one doesn't happen to your family.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that then. I can put the wife in the basement, that's legal.
Section three.
Oh, okay, that's where you covered, okay, Dave, I see that.
Develop housing units in a single-family neighborhood that, that are appropriate for households at various stages in their life, please explain appropriate.
Where are you at?
Number two. Appropriate for households. Develop housing unit Develop housing units in single-family neighborhoods that are appropriate for housing units at various stages in their lifecycle. Appropriate?
Yeah, I'm not, I mean...
Well, maybe not two stories.
Yeah.
Maybe wheelchair, wheelchair accessible.
ADA or something like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Or even just total size. Yeah.
I believe that.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's appropriate.
The fourth one is what I'm struggling with.
Are we done with three?
Yep.
Well, this is number four you're struggling with?
Yeah, I, I agree with it. I just don't know if it's worded right. That's the tough thing I'm, I'm struggling with. Because just to say, provide housing units for persons with disabilities, okay. And I just...
As far as Alan goes, I mean, we have four models here. I mean, Lexington, I think he took a lot of this purpose second out of Northampton. Lexington doesn't talk about people with disa- disabilities.
Yeah, see, that's what I don't like. I don't like it at all.
I think it's appropriate though, because that's very definitely, uh, one of the uses of accessory apartments is if you have a disabled child, for example, who...
How could we put, how could we tuck it into line one?
That, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was trying to not leave it alone, is what I didn't want to do, because I think it was just, not, I think it should be in there. I just didn't like it by itself, because it...
Right. No, I can see that.
Yeah.
I agree. And providing for homeowners.
Companion services. And aid for disabilities.
Yeah.
Where are you here?
Right after services.
Number one.
Second line.
Second line.
After services.
Yep.
After and.
After and.
Aid for disability, yeah, aid for disabilities.
Aid.
For, or, or aid for disabled persons with disability.
I like the disabilities, because it sort of covers all...
Persons with disabilities. I like that one.
Yeah, instead of...
Aid for persons with...
Actually...
Number four, so just copy that that you get down below, yeah.
Yeah, copy, add number four to number one.
Well, I'm here, so...
There you go.
There you go.
That's good.
I like that. And aid for...
Does that count? Now I'll go ahead and delete down here?
You have four, help.
Oh, boy, Addison Redfield's liking this.
So it's deleted and now there's three main, okay. Obviously, this will be a draft, what draft one, we can always come back and recycle through it.
And now that's actually number two, not three. Definitions.
You wanna keep going on this, or?
But just make definitions number two.
Go a little more.
Make definitions number, yep, you're right. I think ultimately, this numbering is not gonna apply.
It'll happen automatically, right?
Well, this numbering system is not what's in the bylaw today, but we'll keep it for the purposes of editing, but the final numbering system will change to be consistent.
Depending on what the number of the bylaw is, if it's fifty-nine, fifty-six, whatever, yeah, wherever it goes. Yeah, yeah. Or we could tell them to tuck it in with wireless, uh, communications and school with it.
So just to comment on this section briefly, there's generally three, this is a policy decision, once again, there's generally three ways that accessory dwelling units occur. One is within an existing dwelling where a portion of an existing dwelling is modified. Part way two is by adding in addition onto an existing structure. Um, and then the third way is to create a detached structure for the accessory dwelling unit. So these are policy, policy decisions. If you want to expand it out to detached or not.
I don't like the detached.
Hey, hold on a second. I got a fourteen by twenty-eight, perfect place. Who this is recorded? No. Perfect place it could be used.
And then something that relates to this directly is if you go with these combinations in whole or in part, is to consider them to be by right or by special permit. So you have two, two such choices to make when it comes to these.
Yeah, I think that, um... The first is, I, I agree with you, but the first one is the, the independent dwelling units. Then, an example of that is, and I'm trying to think of her name, she used to, she was on a regional committee and she had two autistic children.
Julie Kelly.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Julie Kelly.
Julie Kelly.
Julie Kelly. And one of the things that, um, she was talk, talked to me a lot about was having a, a, a separate dwelling in her, you know, in the area of their house, on the property, for her sons, so that they would be living, you know, independently, but on, you know, the, close to having...
We can't figure out all the different needs.
That's why I like all three of these. Let's leave all three, so the options are on the table for all three of these.
I, I don't like the detached.
You don't?
No.
I don't like the detached.
And that chase for her people that need to be watched over, yes.
Yeah, I mean, they could, they're, they're basically, they need a...
The only reason I, I like the detached norm is if later on, we define maximum size of a detached, so they can't, you know, I shouldn't say they, so the detached building isn't larger than the house.
That's another policy decision.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was getting at. So that's why I like leaving these, but later on, define exactly how big a detached can be. That's the only reason I...
I, I don't understand how, if you can design a detached one, how you cannot get that same design with an attached accessory.
Just the point that I'm trying to make is that I know that that's a kind of an up-and-coming policy in, you know, the autistic circles, we have circles where you have, uh, highly functional.
And, you know, the thing, the thing is, even though attached, you know, you're, you're talking about an apartment that has its own bedroom, its own kitchen, its own bathroom.
No, like I said...
And attachment is strictly, I'm thinking like a breezeway or something, just so that somebody can get access in a hurry.
Well, the other, the other detached portion is what Marilyn talked about earlier, is if you've got a caregiver and you have a, call it, uh, what do they used to call it on the Hamptons, the, um, um, you've got a building that somebody else lives in, I, I think a boathouse, but that's not right.
Oh, okay.
Mains, mains, carriage house, thanks. The carriage house, where, that's where the people is taken care of, the family that's living there, lives.
Custodians.
Custodians, yeah.
In my prior experience elsewhere, we had lots of situations where there was an existing detached barn or garage on the same property as the main house. The desire was to convert that detached structure to one of these accessory apartments with the limit of a thousand square feet.
Because in Lexington, there was no other place to put it.
It was a vestige of the older buildings. Some places were built in the, before the twenties. This is how they were laid out, with the main structure and a barn.
Yeah.
Or the...
My grandmother, grandfather in Grafton did.
Yeah, so that's why I like the detached. But on the flip side, I, I, I agree with Norm. You don't want to have a, a house and then a detached apartment that's two thousand square feet with a twelve-hundred...
No, you would control that. And to go back to your point, the person, the people that I'm thinking about who would live in a detached housing would not need someone necessarily to be able to get there quickly. They would need more assistance with budgeting or, you know, maybe shopping or, or getting to school on time, you know, or getting, you know, if your kid was in college or something like that.
See, the, the, in the back of my mind is, is this thing something else that they're trying to get into the town?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. I think they could, something we should have had years ago and never did.
Well, yes, we should have, but is it something else that's gonna, you know, fall in?
You gotta quit thinking like me. You're gonna get yourself in trouble then.
I know. I know. I, I should not think like that.
What's the, what's the plan behind this?
Yes, exactly. And that's what I'm thinking of, and, you know, uh, we're gonna have a bunch of people coming in around here, knocking on doors, and they need a place to live, and only a couple of them, and...
Yeah, but they've got to be related to also. I mean, we can make those other kinds of, as Tim said, you can make those other kinds of, uh, requirements. This is just kind of the overview of the thing.
Yeah.
I think it's a good way to approach this, and we can get into the details. I mean, we're not gonna solve this tonight, but at least get sort of the, like Norm said, the purpose and the definition out of the way, and then we'll pick the rest up later on. Get into the weeds, so to speak, of it.
Right, exactly.
When you have multi-family housing, as it is right now, all it is, is it's another bigger house, just like the same house or their lots are close.
Your frontage has to be one and a half times, and your property has to be one and a half times.
The property does.
In the existing...
In the existing bylaw, yeah, for...
But this is, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, is this something that will take its place?
No, because you still have to stay in, I mean, if you build an accessory dwelling, you can't build it right up to the, your side of your house. You still have to stay within your setbacks.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean...
And...
But it's still like a multi-family type of thing.
It's not really, because the difference between the duplex kind of thing is that there's really no connection.
There's firewall in between them, yeah.
Right. And there's no emotional connection really than you would have otherwise, other than your neighbors, or, you know, they're two separate rental companies.
I think we should think on that. I see what you're... Let's table it.
In this day and age, what's coming along, what's gonna be in the future is, is what I'm thinking of.
Now, you, you could harken some of this probably just back to the state's posture on creating affordable housing.
You couldn't get him wine. You can't get him wine. I'll let you see.
That's what I, that's what I blew up at Central Mass Regional Planning a couple of years ago, when they came in and said it'd push the same thing.
Oh, the state wants to, oh, towns outside of Boston to be affordable housing.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the reason why I keep bringing that crap up, but...
Ben.
I, I love this, and I want this, because I see it. And, uh, I've seen it in my past, and I want to see it in the future.
I'm just saying that...
And I can't believe that, you know, it's only gonna take a blink of an eye before you know it, and your, your little child is gonna be taking care of you, you know?
I don't think about it.
Save some diapers.
Yeah.
I've still got them now, so.
But, you know, I mean...
That's terrible.
I'm evil.
It does come along.
Good point to that.
All right, moving on. Do we just want to keep it detached and then just talk about it later?
Yeah.
Well, I, I would like to do that.
Emphasize it or, or, you know, highlight it or something, let's overdo it back away.
I just think of the carriage house, uh, option, if you've got a caregiver living there, and you, to Dave's point, you've got a, uh, like, I've got a fourteen by twenty-eight, shut up back. I could turn that into a, a bedroom, a kitchen act. I've got heating and cooling in it right now, so...
So there's no changes at this point for definitions, so we're just gonna have a general conversation. Here's, here's what's being proposed.
I, I think what would, this is, everything we do tonight is more of a general conversation.
That's fine. As long as, if, we could just set up a timetable going forward before we wrap up.
Conditions in the corner.
So, um...
Located, located.
Standard, oh, this is where we're getting to the weeds, okay.
So we need to...
Lot only, which is the same house located as the previous. That's important.
No, no, number one. I had a note on a lot of the single-family houses, low-headed must meet minimum lot size. What minimum lot size?
It's got a...
Present, present zoning requirements? Or when the lot was created?
True.
Oh, boy. That's a tough one, because...
We, we go back to third acre lots. On nail sign, whatever, I...
Yeah, yeah. I'm glad you brought it up, because we did an accessory, it seemed to, went to the zoning board of appeals five, eight years ago, something like that, down there.
You, you also may want to consider not having that, and just have it meet the setbacks, the dimensional setbacks, and not have any area requirement at all.
See, I was thinking of that, that, David, just force them to make, make, meet the existing building requirements for prop, for housing or, or setbacks, and keep the property size out of it, or the...
Add the word current.
Well, the bylaw is written now, that could just hit...
That would be a mess.
A mess, yeah.
Because can you imagine over on, uh, Demond Pond of how to get an accessory bylaw apartment over there?
Thanks a lot.
Well, just think of our, our own open space, only by law. You can have a fifteen thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
So instead of lot size, make minimum lot setback requirements?
Which is the second part of the sentence, the applicable zoning requirements for the district. Those, those are the setback requirements.
Yeah.
So ready.
Yeah.
So you can just scratch minimum lot size.
So scratch minimum lot size, okay. Lot size requirement, right, so back to here. Back to here, back to here, meet the, the, the applicable zoning set, required, zoning requirements?
Actually, take, take that, you go to the other must to your right. And, oh, no, back to the left, stop at the end.
This one?
Okay, that's good. And delete everything up to comply. Is located, no, is located...
So I go from here backwards?
Um, let me read this. The lot on which the single family is located must comply with applic, with applicable zoning, uh, requirements. Get rid of the other.
Must comply with...
Yep.
And get rid of the other applicable zoning requirements for its district, and then you're done.
Clean.
Wow. Yeah, like it.
I like number two. Except the yellow needs to stay white.
Yeah.
I think that was a, we're working with the planning commission, I believe they called that out of the policy choice, so just emphasize that.
I think one is, 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 should be the number.
Right.
Yeah.
Especially in Rutland, yeah. I'm not sure I like three.
The, I would say, pardon me, but the number of persons is problematical. I don't know why that's there. Usually what you'll see is a requirement for bedrooms and size, but not...
Yeah, see, I like four. I like four, I don't like three.
So would the Board of Health have anything to do with, I think it's two people per bedroom is what's allowed?
Let them enforce that.
Or not more than? I don't know.
I, I just like number four, and that would be our rule, and keep the people out of it.
So you think there should be two bedrooms, up to two bedrooms?
That's what I think.
Can't be more than...
Because if, if you've got two caregivers, you've got Felix the butler and Jane the nurse, there's your two people.
And also in the packet...
Each has a bedroom.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead, no.
In the packet, there's also research that the building commissioner did of the surrounding towns, and his observation was that most have two bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah. I just don't think the person thing should be in there. That's my opinion.
I did have two bedrooms marked, okay.
We have consensus to remove three?
So you were saying...
I'm saying get rid of number three, but leave number four standard as it is. So you've got the two bedrooms, which could be up to, to Bonnie's point, if, if the Board of Health says no more than two people per bedroom, then it's four, but let the bedrooms define that in the Board of Health, not the planning board.
I think that's what it is. I don't wish...
Well, even if it, even if it's three per bedroom, let the Board of Health deal with that. Let's just tell them they can have two bedrooms. Who, who do they have right now that goes around checking? Hey, hey, let's not get into the enforcement. We're not into enforcement, yeah.
I, I, I could, we're taking that out. Does anybody else?
I, I have no problem.
So three is being deleted, four is being kept, and we like the two bedrooms?
I do.
Yeah.
Two bedrooms, all right.
I'll just, I'll do the highlighting.
I'm not sure I like four.
Why not?
Well, my house has no off-street parking. Try parking on fifty-six and telling me how that works out for you.
These sweet permanent off-street parking spaces shall be available for use by the owner, owners, or tenants.
I couldn't do it. This bylaw would res, wouldn't allow me to put in a, accessory bylaw on my own. I don't have any, um...
You'd have to put in a new one.
Oh, off-street parking. I'm sorry, Norm, I was thinking on-street. That's, that's, uh, no, 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 I...
I think it's okay.
I do, too. Yeah, the homeowner and, and you don't know, you might...
Oh, by the tenants in the, okay.
Yeah, the wife and I still have a car, and, and somebody's taking care of us.
Does that include the parking in the garage?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
In front of the garage, right.
We need to change the word tenant, because we took out the rental, uh...
Yeah.
Well...
Well, no.
I don't, I, I...
Yeah.
The, the person that's wor, is staying there, does it have to be a paying tenant?
I don't think so, no. I think tenant...
Do we define...
No, I think tenant can be a, a living in person.
No, should we put a note there that, that should be a definition somewhere in this thing?
Define tenant?
Yeah, define... Yeah, define tenant.
I could put a note.
Just, I mean.
I don't know if it's.
Well, I'm.
Ask Google what the definition of.
Dick Williams mooching at my house. What?
You could say, or the, the owners or occupants of the accessory dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm.
Or the main structure, right, just occupants.
Okay, occupants.
You call it occupants is more generalized, it doesn't get to tenants, it doesn't even get to that.
Mm-hmm.
I like that.
Occupants. Yeah, you used the word tenants in Massachusetts, and that falls into the Massachusetts fair housing law, which prohibits all kinds of pro, um, and, yeah. I think somebody in this group was thinking wisely, cause it says Attorney General's Guide to Landlords and Tenants in Massachusetts. So, maybe we should come up with a better word.
So, we could just say, um, at least three permanent offs for use by the residents.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
What do you want, just Bonnie, just give me some, what do you want me to?
Just take off by, instead of by the owners and tenants.
Take off by the owners?
Just say the residents.
Okay, by the owners, so we're removing this.
Stop.
Well.
Stop.
Or the residents.
So.
And this consensus on three s, parking spaces being asked, seem appropriate?
Do we need, I think three's good.
I'm just thinking if you've got the, the person who's living in your accessory, the apartment is not driving, just, do they still need a parking space?
Who knows?
But in the future, probably. For the electric, with their electric plug-in, uh, uh, whether.
Oh, for the.
Actually, those things work. The electric cars.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Yeah, but when they get to a hundred thousand miles and they're junk, then you can, then people are gonna find out, what do I do? I've had a car for five years, a hundred thousand miles, and I can't replace it.
And the battery has to be replaced every five years?
Yes, and the battery replacement is the cost of the new car.
Almost.
Yeah. Tim's gonna stick with his Cadillac and drive it for twenty-five years. All right.
Are we keeping three spaces?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Get rid of the highlighting and.
Yeah. Well, this is the one you were talking about that, um, basically holds it from turning into rental property.
Yeah, I have language which is more concise than what they have here.
Yeah, this one seems a little, I don't like that, eighteen months, over twenty-four.
Well, I, I like take, for, over twenty-four months for every two years, so, that, that's, uh, giving you a few months to head to Florida.
Yeah, but what if you're the leave November, come back May?
Good point.
That's six months, that's twelve months in a twenty-four month period.
Um.
And your accessory.
Well, then you're a resident of Florida, not a resident here.
That's a big problem then for this.
I know that's nice.
Cause then you're. Yeah, I, I, I don't like the number. I liked what David said earlier that, um, you have to be the owner of the property, either deeded or somehow worked out, and the accessory apartment is deeded as an accessory, not as a, I don't know what to call it. Individual, well, you wouldn't have to have a number.
That's getting.
Yeah, I'm getting in the weeds.
Not only that, uh, when the owners are not present, the unit they, unit they occupy must remain vacant. What a wonderful opportunity, if you could make a few bucks, R B N O, or what do they call it, I don't.
Airbnb.
Airbnb, yeah, okay, that's a good one. Yeah. If you happen, yeah, when, when it becomes so famous, you know, for fresh air.
Well, it would work.
It used to, until the smoke from California came in.
No, but it was worse in the city than out here.
So, skipping to.
I mean, if you wanna pass on some ways, I'll just make a note that no vet action needed on a given item.
Well, five needs some cleanup.
I did, yeah, I'd like to go back to five sometime, maybe, yeah, good, okay, good.
Thank you.
What, how long does this go on?
For years.
I mean, I'm wondering where there's a good place to.
All things.
I'm just looking at the time.
Yeah.
Get it at nine thirty almost. Yes, and I'm upset because the wife didn't call me at five minutes to nine.
Told you to get out of here.
Well, she's gonna, I gotta talk to Kevin, how he, you know.
Jeez.
I could get more animals.
Gotta get more animals, yeah.
Maybe we can stop right here.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I really wanna bail one on.
So, pick it up.
Cause we need to discuss.
Pick it up right here.
Yes.
When, when our meeting's.
I'm glad, I mean, I think this is a good thing to try to, you know, if we can work on some parts that makes sense to edit, that's good.
The only thing I wanna add to this is I saw down there, it says special permit authority, it's not the Z B A anymore.
That's a decision, that's a decision, policy decision.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm throwing my two cents in, I'll state it with the planning board.
So, Marilyn, how you wanna proceed on this, if you wanna hit November?
Um, I'd like a little feedback, yeah, I mean, there, there seems to be, I don't really like having the meeting after the planning board meeting, but I ju, I'd like some feedback from everybody else.
I just did it tonight.
No, I understand that.
I'll do the impression that we have a quick meeting, but I.
We can go on forever, we always, we all kinda like doing this, so. Um, any, any other thoughts here, I need to.
I'm gonna hit it next week on Wednesday? Tuesdays.
I, I can't do Wednesday, cause I'm on the three hundred and horse thing.
Oh, right, okay, so, no Wednesday, so we're going, it's, I'm here, what I'm hearing is that we wanna do separate meetings, and we're gonna do it on a week opposite this? Is that where?
It's gonna be tough doing it here, cause that's when the con-con is.
Yeah, and the AI Commission meets that night to Wood Studio, so I can't move.
On.
Tuesday.
On Tuesday, well, yeah, no, okay.
We could even meet in the kitchen.
I agree with you. I, is this the only room, Dave, besides a Wood Studio and the, uh, senior center that's allowed for meetings now, or has that changed, or do I not know?
Or you meet in the conference room at the, the old building?
We could, and we could use a screen.
Yeah, I was.
In terms of broadcasting that meeting to the public, I mean, I don't know if you stay amongst that.
I don't have the screen, I don't know.
We do, we have, we have the big TV.
Right.
But in terms of making a meeting public, you could probably, you could do a Zoom.
Right.
If you want it to be recorded, or.
I, that, I don't have a lot of, I don't, uh, to me, that's kinda magic, so. But could we do it on Zoom?
Yeah, we would, we could do it as a Zoom meeting, like we're doing this.
Yeah.
And I can access the document and edit as we discuss it, and then the meetings be recorded, so anybody has an interest can then watch what happened.
Okay.
But we have to be in person.
Pardon me?
We have to be in person, we can't just do it Zoom.
Right, no, we would have to be there, okay.
But the Zoom part would take care of cable access, if they didn't have a camera operator to come in, they could just grab the Zoom recording and upload that afterwards. Do you wanna?
You do not have to meet in person.
What?
You do not have to meet in person.
How do you?
No, that got, that, there was July sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
The day after, the day after the emergency declaration ended, the legislature passed and the governor signed extensions to remote access to meetings, so you, no one has to be in the room, everyone can be remote.
But there could be a priority for having an in-person meeting as the primary way of having the meeting with a remote option.
Yes, that is entirely, yes.
Right.
The re, the requirement is posting.
Yeah.
There is no requirement for any person to be.
So, all it is was extended, instead of forcing everybody to be in person, it allows Zoom still to be a, an option.
Yes, already need to be in person for one day.
But it's a preference for in-person meeting, and that's the priority.
Oh, you can absolutely do it in-person, remote or hybrid, I'm just saying there's no legal requirement for any particular mechanism.
No.
Thank you, Peter.
No legal requirement for any particular mechanism, like when we were during COVID, it had to be virtual only, that allowed.
No, it didn't have to be virtual only, that was a town decision. The town decision was to close the buildings to public access, that mean, that meant that there was a requirement to have remote access.
Well, let me ask you a question for Marilyn. Pete, or Dave, are you gonna be at that meeting, cause I know if I'm in Marilyn's shoes, I got no freaking way to know how to use Zoom at the corporate.
I, I would expect to be at the meetings to edit here, unless you have the meeting minutes, I think we would have to delegate meeting minutes to one of the members.
The other, uh, it's, it's minutes. Um, personally, as chairman, I found that I did one meeting on Zoom, and I really had trouble controlling the meeting, and you guys need control.
So, we need in-person, because I, I love working with people in person.
Right, right, so that, so we, we wanna do it in person.
So, the priority will be in person with a remote option, for members of public, may or may not wanna participate.
Okay, yeah, exactly, that's what I prefer, and I'm hearing.
I think that's what, yeah.
So, and we could be in the, uh, conference room, in the other building.
Just have to be, make sure I can still access that computer with any updated passwords.
My lord, I don't even know where it's at, honestly, data changes so constantly.
I know where there's two computers in the fire chief's office aren't being used, oops, did I say that out loud?
Okay, so the question is that.
And I'll just access the server in there like I'm accessing here.
Yeah.
But we shouldn't know that other part of the house.
Yeah, I, I've lost access to it, it doesn't let me in anymore, so I don't know what's happened with it, to be honest with you.
Is it a Chromebook, or is it a regular laptop?
No, it's a PC.
So, full desktop.
Uh, so, the next question is, I think we're, it sounds like we've got this pretty well sorted out, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, I don't know, okay? Um, minutes, who's doing the minutes?
What date did you set?
We didn't yet.
Okay.
We just decided that we're gonna use the adax, we're gonna use the touchscreen, we're gonna have a remote option, we're gonna use this computer.
Hi. Yes, I'll be back shortly.
So, there, I have two questions, one is who's doing the minutes, and we need to figure out a day, did, I know Bonnie can't do it Wednesday, can you, everybody do it Tuesday?
Tuesdays are virtually impossible for a lot of people in this room.
Well, the first, first Tuesday of the month, no problem. But after that, the next three weeks.
Let me ask a question, anybody got a problem with Mondays, cause I have, I have almost nothing to do on Monday. It's easier for me to do things Monday night than Tuesday.
Okay, it doesn't sound like Tuesday, it's good, Monday?
Yeah, I don't, I don't particularly wanna go to the selectmen's meeting lately, so.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Mondays would work, I think.
Let's try it.
Any other decision, any other, uh?
As long as I, as long as I can talk in Monday at six, cause I gotta drive from South Borough to back here. I usually get out of work by four thirty, then I just go back to work.
How rude.
Yeah.
Okay, so no Wednesday, you're saying Monday, is this Monday sounding good?
Anything after five thirty I can make on Monday.
Well, six o'clock, six thirty, I thought six thirty for people.
Well, that's great.
Six thirty?
Okay. And it's gonna be on the conference room, and, uh, the X Y, or, uh.
Which Monday, who we were talking about?
The one opposite this meeting?
I don't care.
Is it every other Monday or every Monday?
Um.
The next select board meeting is August ninth, so then if you're talking about every other, you would meet this coming Monday, the second.
You said the select board meeting?
I mean, it doesn't really matter, cause you guys are gonna meet over there anyways, yeah.
Uh, that would be a good idea to do every other Monday, so we don't interfere with the select board. So, this, I know it's, I know it's quick, but it's just coming up Monday, but if we wanna get this thing done.
Yeah, for the, for the, uh.
Fall town meeting?
Town meeting.
I'm all for it.
Okay.
So, you were for what?
It's coming up Monday?
The second?
Second Monday, okay.
August second?
Okay.
August second at six thirty?
And then, the next one would be on the sixteenth?
I don't, um, what's the other one?
Yes, yeah.
Sixteenth.
So, let me ask you a question, can we pay Tamika for minutes to help out, uh?
I'm not available on Mondays at all, either after the week's day.
What if you called in on Zoom?
I have another commitment during that time.
Is it, is it town commitment?
No, personal.
Okay, that's okay, then, if it's town, they're fired, but personal, I get it.
Could someone in this group take the meeting minutes, I mean, I, I'm not sure how extensive they really are as a matter of, you know, the document was modified. You know, if the document is referenced and.
As long as they don't have to be as extensive as what we used to do, because we won't use in different formats.
I'm terrible with that.
Uh.
But I would do, if that's all you have to do is.
I think you can be very general and reference, you know, the version here.
Right, because we may.
If, if I may, the, uh, by law, the ad hoc by law subcommittee has just adopted a meeting format, excuse me, a meeting minutes format, which is very general, our meeting minutes don't go, I mean, Norm knows now, cause we just reviewed a bunch, we had one of the nine that we reviewed that went more than one page. And, and a lot of it is big font, because that's just what I do for formatting, but it's, you hit, you describe the sections, you, you mention the sections of a by law that are hit, and you mention the hot, the long discussions.
Okay.
But posting it, literally, you always have to post, uh, working on accessory by law, that'd be the only post for the meeting.
That's exactly right.
I'm serious, and then when the minutes would be worked on section one decision.
The meeting minutes for this one is worked, and they did sections one and two.
Unproposed, on the definition, well done, yeah.
I can deal with that.
Thank you.
I nominate Bonnie as our meeting minutes taker?
I may not be here Monday.
Huh?
I may not be here the first Monday.
Oh, the first Monday, okay.
Well, if need be, Marilyn, I can step in, cause that is easy.
Yeah.
Actually, what I wanna do to irritate the wife, I'm gonna take voice minutes, just to irritate her, is she listening?
Okay, so, um, you've got the day.
I'll also note that Zoom can record meetings, and we have certainly taken and reduced a recording to minutes, if you didn't wanna do it in sit-um, because taking minutes while you're trying to edit a by law is a difficult task.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I used to try to do that.
And it, um, we're at six o'clock or six thirty?
I have six thirty.
Six thirty.
Yep.
And the next meeting.
We gotta get that posted before.
The second Monday.
We actually gotta get it posted tomorrow. Cause this Friday count is a posting with the town closed.
Nope, you have to Thursday.
Yes, Friday counts, the town hall is not closed, the town, town offices are still working, so Friday is still a day.
Yeah.
Oh, I never, I never knew, the doors were locked.
Thursday, you'd have to post it by Thursday, though.
You can always, usually you can get in on the side door.
Okay, you have to get in, or you have to just, I didn't think they were open.
Just in contact with the.
Anita, Anita still works on Friday, Becky still works on Friday, but you'd have to get it posted by Thursday anyways, to post for a Monday meeting.
There is probably an email.
Yeah, that's why I probably not do it.
Are you gonna post?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
He's the greatest man. Somebody send on an email, Tom.
So, I think we've got everything covered, anybody more, any other suggestions, Dave, or anything else you need to?
Uh, no, I would just say that, maybe I can resend this stuff again and make sure you have it, the, um, questions, the policy decisions, the model. If you want these backup ones that the model's based upon, we can send those to you, I did provide a link, it's come from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts website. If you don't want them, that's fine, you can just work on for this.
Yeah, I think we've covered that.
I like working on this, yeah.
Right.
And then you're cut, and then you had a bunch of questions that I gotta turn out, bring in next time, which are policy points to go through, that we can add into this.
And also, you may wanna take a look at the building commissioner's.
I looked at that one, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. All right, I make a motion to close the bylaw subcommittee meeting at nine forty.
I second.
Any discussion? Uh, um, we need to vote, uh, a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
You should have roll call votes. You should use roll call votes.
Even though we're all here.
Even though you're all here, because you have public participation, anybody on board does not necessarily know who's voting.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand it to be that way. I understand that, that if all the members of a particular board are present together, the roll call requirement is not necessary because all the members are here. If you had a member who's remotely participating, then the roll call would be necessary. That's how I understood the K P law guidance on this. But roll call is, never hurts, I guess, but I don't think it's necessary.
All right, let's do a roll, quick roll call, uh, and maybe we can't remember anybody's name.
I, I don't know, me.
Dick.
Yeah, 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 Dick, Dick Williams, aye.
Norm.
Aye.
Aye, Tim, Norm, I.
Marilyn, aye.
All right.
All right, Norm?
I make, I make a motion to dismiss the planning board.
I think there's one more item.
Well, what about your last issue on your agenda?
Yeah, there's one more item.
You can make the motion to adjourn, this item is not ready, I told you that, it's in progress.
Okay, then I'll re.
The TV crew, thanks you.
I'll re-motion my motion to adjourn.
Well, that's emotional, so I'm not voting.
Hold on a minute.
What did we just vote on?
You are not gonna be here for our next planning board meeting.
Yes, thank you, um, I don't have access to a calendar on this machine here, but whatever the week of, August.
Sixteenth.
August tenth.
August eighth to, like, the thirteenth or something, whatever that week is.
That's a big one, too.
Sunday to Friday?
Sunday to Friday, so not just, not the next week, but the week after it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I will, hopefully, we'll be looking to give Norm and Tim a brief on the items.
Oh, cause I gotta, I have to do the, uh.
I don't know, the rental estate lots don't get ready?
Yes.
Yeah, I gotta do that.
So the business coming up are the, the special permit for Glenwood, and the two special charts with Demon Pond, and Britton Estates modifications to the subdivisions. There's no other hearings, there's no A N Rs that we know of at this time, there might be some minor administrative business.
That's gonna be a busy job.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. I think we push the meeting until Dave comes back.
Well, if you want me to participate from a remote location, I can't do that, it's not my, my premise.
No, stop it, you're on vacation. That's the one thing I learned from my new job, when you're on vacation, you're on vacation.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Cell phones don't need to be used.
I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
And I'll second.
And the time, time is what?
Nine forty-three.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, let's do it right. Roll call, Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Norm, aye.